Let me go ahead and do the certification of the meeting. Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meeting, other than special emergency or continuing meetings, at least three working days in advance, by posting such notice on its official public government website, if any, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case of a public body that has no clerk, at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of special emergency or continuing meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public body conducting the meeting. Ms. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Madam Chair. On April 7, 2020, notice was provided fulfilling our criteria via Code, Chapter 37.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. If you could proceed with the roll call, please. Ms. Basin?
Here.
Okay. Camson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Jordan?
He says he's having network issues, by the way.
Okay. Network issues, okay. Okay. Dr. Gabriel? Okay. I'm going to read our statement as to why we are having an electronic meeting right now.
Dr. Gabriel?
Yes.
Before you get very quick, can I ask, does, Ms. Tanner, does Mr. Jordan have the phone number for which he can call into?
Should be in the email. It should be in the email.
Okay.
Maybe we could contact him and let him know, though, that he needs to be at the meeting. I'm sure he's trying hard to get in.
Yeah.
All right. Dr. Gabriel, I just wanted to see if you could just send it to me.
Okay. Okay. Notice of the meeting by electronic communication means without quorum present at any one physical location. The catastrophic nature of the coronavirus pandemic makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. However, the school board of the City of Norfolk must continue to discuss and transact the business statutory required or necessary to continue the operating of Norfolk Public Schools Division. Therefore, pursuant to the combined authority of the declarations of emergency of the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, declarations of the emergency of the city council and city manager of the City of Norfolk, the Virginia Code Sections 2.3-3708, the Freedom of Information Act as modified by provisions within the Commonwealth Budget Act, passed by the House and the Senate and approved by the Governor and the Governor's declaration, and the resolution of the school board, the school board will hold a meeting to address emergency by electronic communication means without a quorum of the board physically assembled at any location on today, May 6, 2020, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The purpose of this meeting is as indicated in the agenda for this meeting.
Okay.
This statement will be supplied and put into the official minutes of the meeting. Okay. So, what I'd like to go ahead and do before transitioning into our motion to enter a closed session, I would like to just make a very brief statement that it has been very wonderful to see all of the positive messages for our outstanding teachers here at Norfolk Public Schools. We know that this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and yesterday was Teacher Appreciation Day officially, and we are so grateful to all of the teachers that we have within our division who are working tirelessly to make sure that they are delivering outstanding quality educational material to all of our students. And we say thank you to all of our staff members, especially our teachers, for going above and beyond the call of duty even during times such as these. And now, I'd like to just turn it over to Dr. Birdsong, who also has a statement.
Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, members of the board, and our community stakeholders. We have a very full agenda today with some very important matters ahead of us. As you are well aware, this is a historic time for us, perhaps the most challenging in our collective history of working together. I am extremely proud of the dedicated efforts of the Norfolk Public School staff who have worked tirelessly, night and day, to ensure that the children of our school division continue to receive a quality education during this prolonged school closure. Pointedly, we are in the midst of Teacher Appreciation Week, which commits on Monday, March 4, and will end on Friday, May 8. I'm sorry, May 4, and will end on Friday, May 8. It seems like March. As I've asserted to you on several occasions, teachers are truly, truly the backbone of Norfolk Public Schools. It is through their untiring dedication that our school division has been able to maintain the vital school-to-home partnership. Recently, we unveiled a Teacher Appreciation Week video that involved parents and guardians submitting photos of their children, holding thank you signs, recognizing the hard work and dedication of our teachers. We were, I mean, completely blown away by the number of submissions that we received. We literally had hundreds of submissions. I believe that this response, it speaks volumes about the value families place on the wisdom and the hard work of our instructional staff. So hats off to the most talented and dedicated teachers in all of Hampton Roads. Their love of children and their belief in them is so inspirational. On behalf of Norfolk Public Schools, I also want to offer our heartfelt appreciation to the parents and guardians who have supported learning in place with their children. They have shown up in droves to our meal distribution sites to pick up instructional packets. They've accessed our online packets faithfully, and they've worked extremely hard at home to ensure that their children remain engaged in learning. Certainly, I would be remiss if I didn't speak to our wonderful students. Students, we miss you. We really, really miss you. I sincerely thank you for keeping an open and willing mind during this closure. I know that it has not been easy for some of you, and I appreciate your tenacity and diligence to stay engaged in learning, even during this challenging time. You have owned the responsibility for your education, and that determination is something that your teachers, assistant principals, and other school staff have witnessed daily. We appreciate your hard work and efforts. Please, 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 please stay connected with us. In addition, the school division has implemented a comprehensive mobile device distribution process built on the foundation of a strong commitment to equity. This accomplishment was possible because of the superb partnership between central office administration and school-level staff. We also appreciate the many families who committed to taking advantage of this opportunity as they continue to advocate for their wonderful, wonderful children. And as you can see, we have a great deal to celebrate in Norfolk Public Schools, a great deal to celebrate. But now, for the tough news. We all knew from the onset, from the outset, that the pandemic had the potential of having a devastating impact on our operating and capital budgets, and so we braced ourselves for this impact. Certainly, as the collective leadership of Norfolk Public Schools, we recognize the reality of the situation. We know that the school division has to work in partnership with state and city leaders to manage the hard financial realities that we are all facing. Some sacrifices are ahead of us, and that's what we will be discussing in depth this evening. As you are aware, under the General Assembly's approved budget, Norfolk Public Schools was slated to receive an additional $11 million in funding during the next fiscal year from the Commonwealth of Virginia. Sadly, that is no longer the case. The revised projection is $5.8 million. This represents $5.2 million less than what we would have received had there been no pandemic. The scenario for city funding is equally distressful. Based on our revenue sharing agreement with the City of Norfolk, the school division will have to plan for a significant reduction in city funding. In a recent presentation to city council, city manager Chip Fowler estimated that the City of Norfolk will need to reduce its contribution to Norfolk Public Schools by $8 million. During the budget discussion portion of our agenda, our budget director, Ms. Tao, and I will discuss recommended strategies to manage these projected shortfalls, which together total $13.2 million. We certainly welcome your ideas as we navigate this new reality together. In conclusion, the magnitude of these reductions will call for innovative thinking, determination, as well as sacrifice. I thank the school board in advance for your commitment to help the school division weather the storm and to stay true to our priorities of adequate compensation for our teachers, resources for our schools, safety and security, capital improvements, and building maintenance. Our solace is this: The incomparable professionalism of Norfolk Public School staff and the unfaltering support of our parents, guardians, and community stakeholders will see us through this time of unprecedented challenge. On this, I am certain. Dr. Gabriel, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Is there a motion to enter into closed session?
Madam Chair. Can I just ask if we've heard from Mr. Jordan yet? He's on. That's, I was just about to make that point. I'm sure that if we'd had the clerk to record, that Mr. Jordan has now joined us. And with that, I'd like to move that we enter into closed session.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So, Mr. Clanton has made the motion. Ms. Martin has seconded. Is there any further discussion? I'm scrolling down just to make sure I don't see any hands up here. Okay. All right. Very well. Then we will enter into closed session. Thank you very much.
Dr. Gabriel?
The motion.
Yes. Need a roll.
Yes. I'm gonna, yeah, right. So, Ms. Tanner, if you could read the motion.
Okay. Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-371 on the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for: A. Discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees, et cetera, of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session will be actions proposed on this month's regular personnel docket and an update on investigations concerning specific personnel and their handling of incidents involving specific students at a specific school. B. Consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are briefing by staff and consultation with counsel concerning the matters identified above.
Ms. Basin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Okay. We'll go ahead and log out of this meeting and then log into our closed confidential meeting.
I'd like to move that we come out of closed meeting.
Second.
Okay. A resolution certifying an executive meeting of the school board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the City of Norfolk, that such committee was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the school board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, I only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the City of Norfolk. Basin?
Aye.
Camson? Okay. Clanton?
Aye.
Smith? She's just coming into meetings. I'll come back to her. Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith? He's in, but she might be on mute. Um.
Looks like she's connecting.
She's, can you unmute her? Let me see. Here she is. Okay. Okay. Christine?
Yes.
Okay. And Gabriel?
Yes. Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Let's just do a quick item 3.02, a roll call. Ms. Tanner, if you could call the roll.
Basin? Here. Camson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Gabriel?
Present. We are now going to move forward with the approval of a modified personnel docket. I would like to have a motion on the floor for the approval of modification of personnel docket for March, the presented docket for April, and the presented docket for May. The modified version of March docket is with the removal of candidate A. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move to accept the modified docket for March and for removing candidate A and the approval of the dockets as presented for April and May.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just for clarity, we're doing both April and May without the one that we pulled. Is that correct?
We are doing March, April, and May. The March docket is the modified docket with removal of candidate A. Okay. Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll.
Basin? All right. Aye. Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
And Gabriel?
Aye. Okay. Okay. So, let me just say, and the ayes have it, the docket is approved. Okay. And then, the next item that we have on our agenda coming out of our closed session is approval of candidate A outside of the March docket. Can I please have a motion on the floor to approve candidate A as recommended by the superintendent?
Madam Chair, a move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for candidate A.
A second. Okay. All right. It's moved to seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Camson?
Just like to say that I will be voting against A because of the, what I consider to be an excessive salary for central office, thereby great increasing the gap between salaries for administrators that are working in the schoolhouse as opposed to those that are working in central office.
Thank you, Ms. Camson. Okay. All right. Do not see anyone else's hands up. So, Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll. Basin?
Aye.
Camson?
Nay.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I would like to thank everybody who is tuning in, especially our staff members who were very patient with us during a longer-than-expected executive session. We thank you again for your patience, and we will try to quickly proceed with the agenda as it is presented. Ms., Dr. Birdsong, if you could go ahead and lead us into item 3.04, Learning in Place Update?
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Again, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'm going, Mr. Brady, Bruce Brady, our acting executive director of curriculum and instruction, and our acting deputy superintendent of academic affairs, Dr. Michael Cataldo, will be joining me to facilitate this particular presentation. They will be presenting information on the NPS Learning in Place Plan. Certainly, when the governor mandated the closure of schools, our administration was prepared to provide learning to our children so that they could continue to engage in the learning process, and we wanted to outline the phases of that plan with you and to provide some information to you about what that plan looks like. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cataldo.
And, Dr. Birdsong, if you don't mind, what we're going to allow is for the staff members to get through their presentation in its entirety, and then we will receive questions from the board. And again, I just ask for everyone to be very cognizant of the time that we have right now.
Thank you.
Hey. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Birdsong, thank you for allowing us an opportunity to talk about our Learning in Place Plan here in Norfolk Public Schools. Let's see, the next slide here. So, the NPS Learning in Place Plan is, it contains lessons, instructional materials, activities, really in the main goals to keep students engaged with learning during this extended closure. We are providing new content and skills, and these new content and skills will help students as they begin next school year. We are doing this for all grade levels and all subjects, and we are following our own established pacing guides for each of the subjects. We do have these Learning in Place plans available electronically on our homepage, as well as each individual school's homepage. We were able to migrate it from our homepage and put a link on each school. So, parents, if they are more familiar with looking at the present, at the school board presentations, they end up doing that. Okay. There we go. All right. And so, that's, we also have the plans available in paper and pencil format. The booklets, we have handed those out most, you know, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, when they come out each few weeks or so. Then currently, we are on phase three, and Mr. Brady's going to be talking more about the different phases and what those entail. But primarily, at the food distribution sites, we have 12 food distribution sites. We have three additional sites, and then more coming along. But right now, we are providing these packets for parents and students to pick up, and they can come to any of the locations, and they can get packets regardless of what school they attend. So, we really wanted to make it easy for parents to come in, get the packets that were for their children, and then be able to move through. So, we, and we've been having just so many volunteers, so many of our own teachers and staff that have volunteered to come out and sometimes talk with parents about the different packets, and other times just answering other questions for them. The next slide here is NPS Learning in Place Plan, and I think Mr. Brady's going to talk about this one.
Yeah. On the next slide, you can see we've divided the closure into phases, each phase consisting of two to three weeks. Learning packets for Phase 1 were created by the Department of Curriculum and Instruction in a little over 24 hours and provided instructional materials for the first three weeks of the school closure. These packets were distributed Monday, the 16th, at the schools during the teacher workday, first day of the governor's closure, and at the meal distribution sites for the following two weeks. During Phase 2, we provided over 33,000 learning packets for the weeks before and after spring break, and they were also created by Curriculum and Instruction after the governor extended the school closure for the remainder of the year. And we were working on a very tight schedule and with a quick turnaround in preparing the packets for Phase 1 and 2. For Phase 3, we were finally able to get some time on our side and get out in front of this. And so, for Phase 3, Curriculum and Instruction was able to collaborate with teachers throughout the district to create instructional activities to provide for families for April 27 to May 15. Approximately 40,000 packets were printed for Phase 3. The number's so high because really of the number of different subjects taken by secondary students. You know, they need individual packets for English, history, math, science, and any electives that they're taking. So, secondary students are picking up maybe anywhere from six to eight packets, whereas our elementary students can pick up just one packet. They have everything in that packet that they need. Phase 4 will begin in two weeks, and we'll run through June. There was a collaborative effort between CNI and our teachers throughout the district who are creating many of the activities that we will be using. And we're currently printing about another 43,000 packets for Phase 4. And as Dr. Cataldo said, there's a lot of people who are playing huge roles in making this happen, from content offices and CNI, our classroom teachers across the district and what they're creating. Dean Martin and his crew at the print shop are spending a lot of hours, a lot of days, printing the materials. Our bus drivers are transporting the boxes and boxes of packets to the sites. And then, we have hundreds of teachers, administrators, central office people, clerical people, working at the tables to distribute these packets every week. So, all right. I think the next slide is back to Dr. Cataldo.
Yes. Thank you, Bruce. So, the NPS Learning in Place Plan, we talked about that and worked, really worked with our teachers on developing a Teaching in the Virtual Environment guidelines. So, basically, there are about three or four different platforms that we're currently using. We haven't used as much yet Virtual Virginia, but it has now become a very robust system. It's actually a learning management system. So, you can do grading, you can do everything in there. So, that has some really great future possibilities as well. Currently, they have over 81 different courses available, and they do have courses available K8. So, that's definitely something we will be using more of and providing training to our teachers on. Generally, in that, that platform is used kind of as a blended environment. So, blended is using synchronous. So, it would be instruction that was happening at the very same time. So, the teacher would say at 9:00 a.m., we will be doing something, some kind of activity, and the students will all log in at 9:00 a.m. It also allows you to do asynchronous learning. So, a teacher could say, okay, on Sunday night, I'm going to give you a module. You will have the rest of the week to complete that module. When you complete it, you'll have an assessment. It's all due by the following Sunday. This allows students to kind of work at their own schedule. Maybe if they have several brothers and sisters at home and other people are using the available computers, they can do it at whatever times work best for them. So, we have that ability to do synchronous and asynchronous for Virtual Virginia, as well as a blended experience, too. Our teachers will have access to free training, ongoing support, and really have the support of Virginia educators. And many of our own teachers have developed these same courses for Virtual Virginia because they are located right by WHRO, right here in Norfolk. So, our teachers are working to create those lessons. So, we know that they are Virginia lessons by Virginia teachers, and it's really a great opportunity as we move forward during this, you know, very online time. Google Classroom, we've been training teachers in Google Classroom for several years, and it's really, it's amazing because so many teachers now are using Google Classroom. and it's really, it's amazing because so many teachers now are using Google Classroom. It is a free service that comes from Google. It allows teachers to manage coursework. It allows them to put their curriculum and things in place and to work with students individually, creating classes. They can provide feedback. They can do, there's some grading in there as well. And the nice thing about Virtual Virginia is that all of Google Classroom documents can be uploaded into Virtual Virginia. That again, already has a plethora of multimedia videos and many different types of ways to access the curriculum. Class Dojo is a third one. Now, this is primarily done at the elementary schools, and this is when parents can get a text from a teacher through the Class Dojo app. It's not really a real text, but it goes to the application, and it provides a communication tool for teachers, students, and families. We find that we have several elementary schools that are 100% Class Dojo. That means before we even went into this extended closure, they were communicating with their parents 100% had Class Dojo. So I think it's a great way, and it uses the telephone. It's not so much something that you need a personal computer or a mobile device for. But again, you can use that as well. And then Zoom, Zoom is, it really allows us to make everything be synchronous. So we are currently on Zoom right now. We are in a synchronous session where we're able to communicate with one another. You can see facial expressions, you can get information dialogue. We can actually put people in different groups. If we wanted to put three people in one group and five people in another group, we could have an exchange where they exchange information and then report out to the main group. That's Zoom. Now, you've heard some stuff probably in the news about Zoom and how Zoom, there have been some issues with that. Those are all in the free version of Zoom. We have been using the pro version for an extended period of time this past year and a half or so. So with that pro version, there is already security built into that. So we would not have those same issues that we've seen in the news about people Zoom bombing and going into sessions unannounced or just kind of going into random sessions. We have that pro version in there, and it allows us to do web-based video conferencing. That's the application we use. We've given teachers plenty of information on what are the guidelines on how a Zoom classroom should function. And we plan on providing additional support as we go through. And currently, right now, the ITRTs are all doing training right now in Zoom with two other teachers. So teachers are getting their training, and students are getting their information, their lessons through Zoom and all these different platforms. So the next slide there. So what have we been doing for our teachers? Well, I think it's important that the teachers themselves are prepared to work in this online environment. So as I said before, we've been training in this whole year, and actually, the last two years, we've been training Google Classroom. In this past year, we started off with Zoom, actually last summer, and we've continued to train with Zoom and Google Classroom. So teachers are more familiar with that. I will say, since the extended closure and students now all having laptops or some type of mobile device, we have seen, in talking with the ITRTs, we've seen an upsurge in teachers that want more and more training. So they're really adopting this and getting excited about different ways of being creative in the classroom for this very unprecedented online environment that we got forced into very quickly. The training has been going on, as I said, daily. ITRTs are providing that training. And we've also provided guidelines for Zoom, as well as guidelines for teaching and expectations for the online environment. So we're really pleased with this, and, you know, I've wanted to go one-to-one for a long time, and I think this has been a great, maybe a very small benefit for just some of the things going on right now that we're being, we're able to really move in that direction. We did mobile device distribution as well, as I had mentioned earlier. All students, and basically, we really wanted to say that all students in need of a mobile device will receive one. They'll receive either a Chromebook, an iPad, a laptop, probably a Windows-based PC, and/or a hotspot. So hotspots are coming. So students that do not have internet access at home or have very limited plans per se, that they have very few gigabytes, we are providing those hotspots for them. And we have, we initially surveyed our students right before the extended closure, and we got initial information on students that did need devices. But then what we did is we followed up and had our principals work with our teachers, and teachers contact all of their students to find out who was in need. Because some students said, yeah, we have a laptop at home, but then they didn't realize they have four brothers and sisters and mom and dad that are trying to do their work with the only laptop in the house. So yes, they did have a device, but they didn't have enough devices for all of them to be able to do Zoom sessions, maybe all at the same time. I know my wife and I are in different rooms in the house. So you kind of have to parse things out, and we were hearing a lot of information about that from families. So we want to make sure that those three brothers and sisters, they have a device as well. So we want to make sure no one is turned away when they do come for the distribution days. We started on April 20th with high school seniors, and then went to juniors, sophomores, and freshmen that week. And then the following week, the following, actually, two weeks, and finishing up on this Friday, we should have all of our elementary and middle school students with mobile devices. And so we're really excited about that, and we've been hearing a lot of great, you know, we get great emails from parents and even from the teachers. And now they're seeing that their students, I got an email from one of our ESL teachers that said, child picked up the computer like at maybe 11 o'clock, and by 2 o'clock, they were online, and they were getting so much information. They were just so happy about that. So new students that come into the school division, or students that may have missed or been able, difficult to get hold of, we do ask them to contact their principals so then they can receive a mobile device. Again, the main goal here is no one is turned away, and everyone in the division that needs a mobile device will get one. And I think Mr. Brady has the next slide.
All right, if you can move to the next slide. Yes, thank you. We were in the midst of quarter three when the governor suddenly closed the schools, and so we needed to create a plan for closing out the quarter-three grading period in a way that would be fair to students and not penalize them. The plan created included the following provisions. We closed the quarter-three grading period March 13th, which was the last day that the schools were open. Students' grade for quarter three was calculated based on the work that was due on or before that March 13th date. We also base students' grade on work that was completed in the quarter and did not penalize students for missing work, which they did not have an opportunity to complete because of the sudden closure of the schools. So the grade was based on work they did, and we exempted them from work that they were not able to do or complete prior to March 13th. We also stipulated that students would be afforded every opportunity to submit missing work for all previous quarters until the end of the school year. And the work submitted will count only if it helps improve the student's overall average. All Learning in Place packets and other assignments completed after quarter three will apply to the fourth quarter. And Dr. Cataldo will talk about quarter four.
Yes, thank you, Bruce. So in quarter four, that grading period, during the closure of schools, one key thing to remember is the intent is not to replicate the traditional instructional day. So we are not attempting to have a regular 7.33 or more hour day for our students. We want students to be able to demonstrate some level of understanding of essential skills. We know that next school year, we've already made some plans in place to provide additional practice and review at the beginning of next year, as well as looking at modifying potentially some curricula to enable students to pick up parts of the previous year that they may have missed. So what we want is teachers to be able to assist and support students as much as possible. Students will be demonstrating a level of the essential skills that have been emphasized in our Learning in Place plans. We want to make sure that our plan is supportive and reasonable with the expectation for students and families because we know that students and families are in very different situations. Some are really struggling, and it's difficult for the child to really be able to be engaged. And so we want to really look at students' families' unique circumstances and reviewing those on an individual basis. I think that's a key part there. Individual circumstances of students must be taken into account as we move through quarter four. We do not want to penalize students for their inability to fully engage in the learning process, but we do have plans for them to be able to engage at some point. If they're unable to engage right now during, you know, with, you know, things being shut down, it may be very difficult for some families, and they may really be struggling. So we want to be cognizant of that. So the next, the next slide. So the quarter-four grading period itself, what we've decided to do is each quarter's percentage has been changed. So quarter one, two, and three all equals 100%. So quarter one is 33 and a third, quarter two and quarter three. So that's where a student is getting their primary grade. They're getting the grade for the year from those three quarters. Because we're not replicating a school day, we have decided that quarter four, students will either get a pass, a P, or an I for incomplete. So those are the two grades. So students must have an overall passing average of quarters one, two, and three, and receive a P in order to move to the next grade or to pass the course for the year. So we wanted to make sure that the work that students are doing now, the teachers, that the work that the teachers are doing now, too, and the families that are making sure their children are working hard, that that information is going to be counted for them to be able to move on, and we want to make sure they have those essential skills. Now, if a student were to get an I because of a family situation, again, we're going to be looking at situations individually and find out what works best for the child or the family. They will be able to turn that incomplete, that I, into a pass by August 28th. So they're going to have the whole entire summer for that. And so they can demonstrate and show that understanding of essential skills through a portfolio. The teacher may have them complete a portfolio that may take a few weeks in the summer, or they may offer them a teacher-directed project. Or the students, if they, if they were some learning packets they did not, were not able to complete, they would be able to complete at that time. And then also, if the school division, we're most likely going to be providing some type of summer school experience, depending on governors, any regulations and things that are there. It'll most likely be online, or it could be face-to-face, or it could be a blending of the two students that need additional support. We want to make sure to be able to work with them face-to-face. So this is, it's a great time for a student to be able to take that incomplete and turn it into a P by August 28th before the next school year. So that's pretty much what we have for our quarter four grading. Again, we really wanted to look at individual students' needs, be cognizant of family situations, not penalizing students that are not able to complete the work right now, but also providing students that are able to complete the work an incentive to be able to go on and do that work. And just any questions and answers right now?
Ms. Tanner, if you could put us into the gallery view screen, if you wouldn't mind. That way I can make sure I see everybody's hand up. Thank you, okay. We'll start with Ms. Martin, and then Ms. Bassin, Ms. Campson, Mr. Jordan, Ms. Smith. All right, we'll just go around the room. Okay, Ms. Martin.
I think that's my house. Is that my house?
It's your house.
Oh crap, okay.
It's not a fire alarm, is it?
I'll make it real quick. Thank you all so much for what you're doing. The teachers have been absolutely amazing, and I think, I just, it has been a great experience as a parent to have, have these Learning in Place packets and the devices distributed. The food distribution's been great. So I mean, to pull this all together literally overnight, I mean, I just can't be more proud of our district and how everybody has pulled together to make this the best experience possible for our students and the parents. I know parents complained, but we got through it, and things are, you know, we're in our new groove now. So, so thank you. I do want to hear more about any extra accommodations that are being provided for children with special, the special education children.
Okay, we have, we have worked with Joy Richardson, the, working currently with learning support. And what, what her folks are doing, her teachers that are working with students with disabilities, special education teachers, are contacting families and contacting students and really working individually with them. I know in talking with Dr. Richardson, there have been many phone calls that her department is really trying to reach out to all of our students. Now, some of that information comes through in emails, but many, most of it, I believe, is coming through actual phone calls and getting in touch with parents. We've also talked with Dr. Richardson about what summer school could look like as well to make sure that we are addressing those needs of students that have, you know, have, maybe take a little longer on some things or just have a disability that we can work with them on. So that has been, that, Dr. Richardson has been in all of our meetings, too. She is in our meetings, we're talking about curriculum, Learning in Place plans, and she is part of many of our cluster meetings as well because we realize, you know, that is a part that we really, you know, it's a percentage of students that we want to make sure we are able to work with. And sometimes, students with disabilities find it a little more challenging working in the online environment, whereas others find it extremely beneficial and very easy. I received an email from a parent that said that their child is thriving in this environment, and where they're mostly challenged sometimes in the school environment with distractions. Now, they're just, just really loving this experience. So yes, we have to work a lot with Dr. Richardson to make sure learning support is working right step of the way with Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cataldo. Let me see here, I think we were Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Campson. Ms. Bassin, you're on mute.
Okay, yep, I got it. Yes, I too want to take the opportunity to thank everyone here today who has organized and put on this just incredible effort to move from, you know, to digital learning. I know I can't imagine the work that went into that, and I especially want to give a shout out to our amazing teachers who no doubt are executing and caring, especially, you know, not only the instruction, but checking in with a lot of care for their students to make sure that they are emotionally doing well. So huge thanks to them. I do have several questions. A lot of these I've also submitted a few times, you know, via email, but I will take the opportunity now to ask some of them. In addition to the question Ms. Martin just asked about our students with disabilities, one of the questions I had asked about opportunities for teletherapy services for students that may be receiving PTOT, are those situations being explored, or have they been explored? And, you know, what challenges, if any, you know, do we have around that?
So I have, I've spoken to Dr. Richardson about that specifically, and she's expressed to me that in some cases, some of those things have been going on virtually without any issues. And there are some cases where parents are saying, we appreciate your efforts, but we really need to take a pause from this right now. So as Dr. Cataldo previously stated, as it relates to the overall Learning in Place Plan, we are really taking into consideration the individual needs of families and trying to adjust according to what their needs are.
Okay, all right, thank you. And in regards to the different modes of virtual learning, are you assessing how many teachers are using each of the different platforms in order to either expand? You know, like you said, I think this is a potential, you know, little silver lining in that we are exploring these. in that uh we are exploring these various ways to enhance our digital learning opportunities. Um, and if if so, at some point, you know, I know we don't have a lot of time, but I'd love to receive that information as to how many teachers were were using each of the different uh modes of uh of virtual learning.
Yeah.
Unless you, you know, have that off the top of your head, which, but.
Yes, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I do know that in our cluster meeting, meeting with principals, we've asked that same question. And what we could, we could easily get some additional and get more specific information. Uh, but the principals are extremely pleased with just the level of uh of engagement that these teachers have had gone into. And and even some teachers that in the past may may not have used the technology as much, maybe were not as interested. We've kind of all been forced to be able to learn these platforms. And those I T R Ts, they are working harder now than they've worked during the school year. Um, it's amazing. They have session after session after session. I look at their calendars, I have meetings with them, and they are working hard, uh, getting these teachers um excited. And they're excited because this is, that's what they do. They love technology. And uh they're getting more and more teachers that are asking them questions. So I know Google Classroom in some of our schools is close to a hundred percent. Virtual Virginia is something that is very, is much smaller, but you watch by the end of the summer and beginning of next school year, that'll be all the way at the top too. Cause it's just a wonderful uh platform that the the state has uh opened up for all of the schools.
Right. And and I don't.
Um, Mrs. Basine and other board members, we are exploring utilizing the uh Virtual Virginia platform um um next year uh as a learning management system. And so we have um been in contact with um our representatives from from Virtual Virginia. And we are certainly looking forward to expanding our use greatly um next school year.
Okay.
It's gonna be great.
Currently in the works right now.
Right, that's great to hear. Um, and so along, you know, those lines, you know, uh, one of the things I had asked about too was um feedback from our stakeholders, whether it's teachers, parents, uh our students as well. Um, I think that is an important component of everything that we have been doing over the last couple of months and going forward, especially should we find ourselves in this um situation again, you know, when when we return to school, if we return to school, um, you know, or if this is a prolonged activity uh that, not activity, but a prolonged situation where we're in this digital learning mode for a long period of time. I think that feedback is especially important. Um, and uh, you know, for one of those, you know, tied to my previous question, you know, I've had some uh folks share, you know, that the Zoom, the the change in the Zoom policy uh from getting permission from each and every student has inhibited um, I think, some teachers from really utilizing that tool. And then uh it may also limit access to, for students if, you know, the whole process of getting per permission and all of that. So it's just something, you know, that I want to put out there. You know, and and stress the importance of getting that feedback uh from our principals, teachers, you know, the various stakeholders and our students as well. So.
Of our, part of our plan.
One parent that reached out with that concern.
With that concern, yeah.
Yep. And part of our plan too, for the um teaching in an online environment, is that all teachers um at least once a week, whether they're on paper packet or they're on online, that they are getting in touch with the students. Uh, so we really want the teachers to to know that they have to get in touch with the teachers. And that's where they can get that information. If there's permission issues, they can very quickly solve those.
Okay, and two other quick is, um, you know, I I've been concerned about some of the the local policy that, you know, some of the issue areas where uh, you know, the state has indicated that, um, you know, uh, certain decisions are local policy decisions, um, such as, you know, how GPA will be calculated um around the locally verified credits as well. Um, and so, you know, I'd like to hear more about that. Uh, you may still be working on that or uh, you know, you might have a response tonight. Uh, but I'd like to hear more about that as well as, and I'll sum it up, you know. I know the big question uh for a lot of our seniors is, what is the graduation plan? Um, so I, you know, I'll just sum up my questions with, you know, ending with that. If you can speak to any of that.
I I know Mr. Cloud is prepared to this evening, I think it's later on in the agenda to discuss um the resolution um that was presented to um to us through the V S B A. And so with that said, a a lot of the local policies, um, you know, uh, our state superintendent has certainly asked for very specific waivers. I believe there were fourteen, fourteen to fifteen waivers. And um the Secretary of Education approved those waivers. And one of those issues include locally uh awarded verified credits. And certainly with a resolution in place, the school board wouldn't have to worry about going through each and every policy and making policy changes around those. So in my conversation with um Mr. Cloud, which included that particular policy and and some others, um, once we discuss that reg resolution, if the board decides to move forward with it, it would keep, it would um keep us from having to look at every single school board policy and revising it in accordance with this pandemic that we're currently facing right now. So I'm I'm looking forward to that discussion.
Okay.
And as it relates to graduation, we too are very, um, certainly we can't have traditional graduations, but um we have been planning for quite some time. And I see Deb Rock is on the call and she's been helping us with with that effort. Um, we were asked um not to uh communicate our plans until after a conference call with the state superintendent on Tuesday. Certainly it wasn't a directive, it was a request. And certainly we adhered to that because we wanted some guidance from Secretary Carney about um, you know, what was going on in 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 terms of COVID nineteen, what the, you know, uh, what the different models look like and and things of that nature. So before it, that conversation even ever took place, our team had already put together in in thinking, you know, big picture thinking, because we certainly want the input of our seniors and um their parents as well. We knew that we would most likely not be able to um host um a graduation ceremony in person, a traditional ceremony as we've um all experienced in previous years. And so today, um, we sent out a survey to our parents so they can provide us some input. So very loosely right now, we are um considering having virtual graduation ceremonies um on the dates that have already been scheduled with our high schools and um trying to think about uh an another way that we can celebrate our seniors, perhaps in August or or another date, which may, may, may provide an opportunity for us to do something face-to-face. And we're really hoping to be able to do something like that, but we don't want to put false hope out there. So we're paying very close attention to what, you know, the governor's announcements, the announcements of um our state superintendent. Um, but at the end of the day, we are deeply saddened that we won't be able to provide a dish, a a traditional ceremony for our children. So we're hoping that our seniors will give us some um great feedback and and we're looking forward to um making sure that they have a memorable experience during their senior year because they've worked so hard for thirteen-plus years and we need to recognize that.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Ms. Campson?
Oh, well, I'm not gonna ask any additional questions. I'm just gonna take a minute to, once again, congratulate the entire team. What a fabulous job that you've done uh with no blueprint. You know, you're you're drawing your own map of of how to make this work for our children. And it's an extremely um, extremely impressive as has the work that our principals and teachers and the schools with the kids. So congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clayton?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Uh, again, I don't have any questions. I just want to echo the sentiments that have already been expressed. And I guess in this respect, you know, we're in this pandemic, but I also like, I'm glad to hear that we're thinking about post-pandemic um and what we can do to continue um to offer various different ways uh to reach our students so that they can uh be the very best that they can possibly be and achieving their academics. Um, but the other piece I will also add is that this pandemic has also exposed um some of the um some of the gaps that we have within our community and some of the um socioeconomic statuses and abilities for individuals to have access. Um, and so um as a board, I would just like to say is we continue to look at um our equity and look at our diversity issues, um that this be something as a lesson for us to continue the conversation, to advocate, um and to work with others so that we can ensure that all of our students. Cause I know that it was written that Norfolk was the last, but I will give credit to our our administration that even hearing anything like that, that you all were working, you were on it, you were working to ensure that we could put a plan in place so we would not have one child left behind. And so I appreciate you all for doing that. Our community appreciates you for doing that. Um, and we want to just continue to see great success and making sure that we're reaching the needs of our students and making sure that our our families are taken care of. Thank you.
And and thank you for that comment as well, because we've been questioned about our, you know, paper packets. And, you know, we again are in the process. I I think we've taken care of our high school students and we will be um concluding the distribution process with with our middle and elementary kids. So we're expecting all of our children to have um devices, mobile devices that they can use if they choose to access the information online. Some families may choose not to do that. And so, yes, we do want to provide um paper uh packets for for our students and families because some children just prefer to 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 work that way. And so um I I think there's only one other division in our region that doesn't rely on that. And I'm not sure that that was actually um put out there. But again, we we try, we're trying our very best to provide the information in a variety of modes so that we can meet the individual needs of all of our families.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Miss Martin? I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan. Miss Martin, do you mind if we let Mr. Jordan go?
Yeah, I just had a quick comment.
Okay.
I I can yield. I can go ahead.
I just want to say, we love the um, the paper packets. You know, where our kids are submitting everything online. I don't know, you know, who I'm speaking for, but uh, you know, just us. But um, but I, the paper packets help keep things organized, especially when they're in the upper grades and they're, they have so many different classes, um, which which is what you taught, referred to earlier, the multiple packets. So I'm just saying, we, I love them, even though we're still working on the computer.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, so uh I'd like to echo the kudos that have been shared uh already in terms of how the division uh took on this mammoth task and ramped up and provided all the support and services from education to food to things that you're continuing to do. Uh, I do want to piggyback somewhat on uh the issue that Mr. Clinton has raised cause I, I'm still very much concerned about uh uh equity and access issues, especially as we are considering um that the fourth quarter grading new content process. I personally, if had given the opportunity to weigh in on that, I would not have been in favor of that um until we had a better sense of um the access and and equity issues. So, you know, I tried to get on today, my Cox account went out, oh, we shouldn't have said that, my provider went out. And uh, and now I'm using a different provider right now on my phone. And um, and during this pandemic, I've had many conversations with the many parents and students that have had challenges uh with the with the access piece. I am thankful that we're providing those devices. Um, but I still want us to get a better sense of the the usage of it as we move forward. But some things I just wanted to um bring forward in that regard. Um, so even prior to the pandemic, under normal circumstances, we track attendance. And we know that there are some students in some schools that uh have greater attendance than others. So I haven't gotten a sense of it all in terms of what our data is looking like in terms of students who are actually participating, attending, whether it's uh uh Zoom meetings or all the electronic modes or how we are able to track uh what students are doing with the the paper packs. Um, I've also encountered many parents who are uh, they're working in the grocery stores. They are uh distributing packets, doing food, doing many of these things that uh doesn't provide for them the opportunity to be home uh during the day with their with their students. So I know you all are saying that you're surveying families and talking to families. I would like to get some sense of uh what you're seeing in terms of those students who are, who have uh parents or support at home and those that do not and what type of uh participation and performing and support that they are receiving, especially as it comes to um uh, you know, new content or even supporting existing content. Um, we mentioned the uh, the verified credits. Um, I I heard that explanation. I I do think that the board should have an opportunity to have a discussion around that. I know in in the city of Virginia Beach, they amended their local uh verified credit policy first and then integrated it into uh their resolution. So it wasn't necessarily a slowdown or a conflict. I just think that we need to make sure that we examine our specific um local policy, do any type of amendment that we need to do or updating that we need to do so that whatever the circumstances are for students in twenty twenty and twenty-one, that our policy reflects the guidance from the, from the state. Um, and then I would also say in terms of uh surveys, uh again, going back, trying to get a good sense of um who's participating, who's not, who has the access, who does not. Uh, especially as we are considering this approach of the uh pass or I and the considerations around summer school and how, if during the summer we still are in this similar circumstance, you know, I I think it's easy to say that during the summer, students will be able to do X. But if we don't know what students are easily able to do today, then we won't necessarily know what type of additional supports and gaps we need to fill to ensure that we are providing uh equitable opportunities for for students to succeed. So that that's it for now. Again, I want to thank everybody for all the support. It is Teacher Appreciation Appreciation Week. And I think if nothing else during this pandemic, uh, people ought to be appreciating uh what their, what the teachers do day-to-day and the principals and the support staff and everybody that's involved with making sure that children get what they need when they're in the uh, in the in the classroom. So that's it for now, and I may come back later, but I think the other questions I had or comments have been addressed.
Okay, all right. Uh, Ms. Smith?
So I too would like to commend the uh administration for stepping up to this challenge with the Learning in Place program. You guys did a great job. Uh, I'm just gonna be brief, but similar to what uh Mr. Clinton and Mr. Jordan said, they stole what I had to say. But my my, my primary concern is as we go through um this learning in place process, and I keep saying this over and over again with everything that we do, that we begin to analyze what's taking place, especially with the participation level. Um, we we're preparing this so that with the thought that we're going to reach out to every category there is, but we need to be able to measure how well we're reaching out to them. How effective is this? And begin to discuss with the board lessons learned as we go through this process so that we can improve upon it and that it does not adversely and disproportionately affect students.
Okay.
That's it.
Very true.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay. All right, I think everybody has has had a good opportunity to speak. Okay, Miss Basine, I see your hand up. Um, just brief comments, if you don't mind. Brief?
Yeah, um, I had a question too. I was looking back at my notes. Um, so with the um rollout of providing, um, you know, a device in the hotspots, are the, are those from our current inventory or were funds reallocated to ensure that we could provide uh students that need it, students and families that need uh the devices?
Great question, Miss Basine. Um, we are using our current inventory. However, we have also ordered uh additional devices. Um, so um certainly at the. So certainly at the time that we ordered them, we were thinking that we would need to reallocate funding. But based on our receipt of stimulus funding or certainly will apply for all of that. But we're anticipating being able to use stimulus funding to support that purchase. So yes, we're using existing inventory, but we are ordering or we have ordered additional mobile devices for our children.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what my comments essentially are again to. Very much support my colleagues who share in the compliments. Given to Dr. Birdsong and the administration for all that they have done to very quickly. Adjust to this very new and unique learning environment that we're in. I cannot stress enough. How much many teachers have really stepped up to the challenge and even though they couldn't figure out a way maybe to reach their students, some of them. You know, hand delivered supplies to students, markers, glue sticks. And just the fact that we decided, and I believe that we were the first division in our area. To think about making sure that students had meals for the weekends. Because we, you know, if you're watching the evening news, you see the lines at the food banks and and the. Stress that has been put on the families about the unemployment. With their current situation. And I want to applaud the administration for being proactive. As you said, Dr. Birdsong, you were already taking steps in thinking about graduation. You were taking steps about. What does the school year look like in the summer? What will it look like in September? And so I would just say to my colleagues. That we do receive emails from parents and comments from parents. And it's very important that we pass that information on to Dr. Birdsong. So that way she can understand what we are bringing to her, what the information that we are receiving. And so that way she can appropriately get the information to her principals. So that they can meet the teachers and the students and the families that are being directly affected. So thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Thank you for being proactive. I know our division was not in the place that we wanted to be, you know, come March 13. But I know that you are working very, very hard in order to get us to that area. And again, to echo comments of my colleagues about the equity issue, certainly every student. Needs to be seen as an individual and as best as we possibly can advocate for the services that they need. And when I say advocate, I also mean that. We need to be very vocal about the needs that we are identifying now. And when we think about. Our state funding and our local funding and our federal funding, be grateful for the funds that we are receiving, but also be ready to champion. More funds if needed for our city, so that way they can directly reach our students and our families in need. Okay, so what I'd like to do now is move on to item 3.05, the textbook adoption. There was already a discussion that took place before we. Left on to teleconferencing mode. We were at Granby High School. Actually, I see Dr. Dr. Gibson on call and it looks like she still is at Granby High School. I can recognize those doors. And so what I'd like to do is we're gonna have a motion on the floor to adopt. The textbooks for English grades six through 12, Health and PE, AP World History. We're gonna have a motion. We'll have a second. And then if there's further discussion that needs to be had, then we can do that and then we will move for a vote. Is there a motion on the floor for the textbook adopt?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve the adoption of the textbooks as selected by the textbook adoption committee, English. Grade six to 12, Health and PE and AP World History.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Smith, I hear a second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Jordan. Yes, Mr. Jordan, go ahead. And then what I'm gonna do now, guys, only because it's almost 7:30. Is Ms. Tanner, if you could just start giving everybody two minutes. So that way we can keep track of time. It will be equal, I promise. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Watching ESPN and the Jordan rules. In terms of the world history, can you remind me, again, that course is only offered at one high school? Was that the case? Can you remind me what that situation was?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. If you recall from the last time we met at Granby. There was a discussion about offering AP World History. And I I think during that meeting, what came out of that meeting was that. Only the teacher, there was a teacher at Maury High School that was interested in that course. And what I committed to. With the board is going back and to doing another assessment to see, you know, to try to encourage. You know, our building principals and and teachers to take this on. And so a teacher at Booker T. Washington. Decided that, you know, she wanted to participate in that. So that course will actually be taught at Maury High School. And at Booker T. Washington High School next year.
Well, thank you for that, because I was also at a. African American History Education Commission and there were. Instructors and teachers from from Lake Taylor that were very much engaged with. That event and supporting their students. So I didn't know if they may have also. Indicated some some interest, but I'm glad to hear that it'll be offered at more than one school. So thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yeah, so since that was the that initial discussion was a couple of months ago. I just need to, I think, hear confirmation that. At least for the history textbooks, that it's been assessed for cultural responsiveness and accuracy. And then as far as the comprehensive health. What's that? Oh, and then as far as the comprehensive health, you know, just making sure that it's inclusive. You know, even in terms of discussing opioid abuse, mental health, sexuality. Pregnancy intervention, all those things to make sure that it's an inclusive text. That includes a variety of health issues that I know I know sure it was assessed to ensure that it was. In alignment with our standards, but also the inclusive piece is really important as well.
Yes, the AP World History textbook, just by nature of being aligned to. The AP World History course. That course is a very inclusive course. In fact, the thing that really is unique about the AP World History course is it's non-European history. The only time that it touches on European history, and it's a very small percentage, is when. Europeans interact with other areas of the world, but it is predominantly. Focusing on Asia, Africa, Latin American history. And so, yeah, wonderful course to explore, you know, the areas that typically aren't. Maybe covered in in your typical world history class that is very Eurocentric in nature.
Right, okay.
My understanding with the health textbook is one of the key. One of the key features was that it was, I was told, was very up to date. On health issues in in the world of of health and and our teenagers. So. Yes, I believe that that is going to be exactly the the type of book that we need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll. Hi, Gamsen. She muted.
She's muted.
Where she is? Hi, thank you. Clanton?
Hi.
Morton?
Hi.
Jordan?
Hi.
Gabriel?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, next item 3.06, the academic calendar. I will turn it over to Dr. Birdsong and I will ask that we again, keep all questions until the very end and we'll put time limits on the questions. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong.
Thank you. Good evening again. Deb Rock is is with us this evening. And she will be sharing information about moving forward with our our academic calendar for next year. Certainly, we conducted a survey as we do annually. She'll be able to give you some high level information about the results of that. What we're doing as a region, the two calendars that were were submitted for. Feedback from our community and certainly you would need to vote today to to decide in what direction we will go for next year. So without further ado, Ms. Rock?
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Tanner, you're gonna put my presentation? Good job. All right, you can go ahead to the next slide. I'd like to thank the calendar committee, which includes departments from across the division as well as our local. Associations that are also on the committee. Considerations when we're developing the regional calendar, as you can see. We all take these into consideration so that we stay fluid on this side of the water. Our region is just this side of the water. The other side of the water of the peninsula. Have different criterias, but these are the ways that the the procedures that we follow. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner. In spring break, as you all know, or remember, there's the formula about the Easter formula. So we will be heroes this year. Because spring break will occur after Easter. So that will make us very popular. Or has made us very popular. Next slide. Our numbers in the last couple of years, if you recall, we didn't have two options. So all we received was input from our calendar. Surveys, but this year our responses went all the way back up to 3,100, over 3,100 total responses. The number one option was the lower one with 379, option two with 2,762. That liked the option two. And as you reviewed it, I'm sure you see why option two has become popular. Because we're offering the two week winter break. Next slide. Some of the questions as far as the comments, do we have built in makeup days? Yes, we do. We have removed Columbus Day and that puts us in alignment with the rest of the region. And by doing that, that helps us use one of the days. For the winter break. People would always like the spring break after Easter. As we know, looking at the formula I just discussed, that's. Not the way that we could do that. Start school in August. We had quite a few requests to start school in August. That has not been a consensus for the region as of yet. It may come down the road, but as of right now, the region, that's not a topic of conversation. So we'll wait as a committee to see if that changes for future calendars. Two weeks should always be considered for winter break. It can be done. It just it it depends on where Labor Day falls and then how far into June that we have to go into. More professional developments for teachers have been developed in this calendar for this year. Ms. Tanner? Some of the other comments that we'd receive, we receive kudos. It is very refreshing to have a longer holiday break. Teachers benefit from professional development days and learning. And we even got to thank you for all you do, NPS, for allowing us to have input and for giving us an option. So it's always nice to to feel appreciated. So we really do appreciate that. The next slide that you'll see, the district comparison. This is where you can see the differences in all the other parts of it. Just as a highlight. In the first one, we're in a line in September, excuse me, the start date, we're in alignment with the other areas, schools. On our side of the water. And we will be taking into consideration for the 2021 calendar. The Jewish holiday that will be on the first day that we would officially go back to school after Labor Day. That will be taken into account. The the regional committee has already had that discussion in October. Option two, we've removed the Columbus Day. So we'll be going to school that day. And you can see that we kind of fall in alignment. With the other school assist divisions. And in November, we're in alignment with the request by the city to close for the election day. So that becomes a virtual day, not virtual like we're doing now, but a virtual day that teachers are working virtually. But the students have no school that day. Winter break, we're in alignment with the rest of the school divisions. Give or take an early release day here or there. Spring break, as I previously said, we're in alignment. And the last two columns, the student last day and the teacher last day, within a day or two, we're all getting out at approximately the same time. Another difference between our option number one and number two. Number one is the traditional calendar with the professional development in the teacher rep day at the end of January. We have made a little modification per curriculum instruction. It feel as though we need more professional development spread out throughout the course of the year. So in option two. We have two staff development days, two in the fall and two in the spring. Of which one is for the building and one is for the division. So that is a change that we have made, but I think. With working with curriculum instruction, we'll see a significant impact with the teachers being able to get that professional development. On the next slide, this is the disclaimer that we've used for the inclement weather. And answering the questions as far, do we have bank days? And these are our bank days and how we use our bank days. So far, so good. We've it's helped us with our past calendars. So hopefully we'll continue to have it. Fall in alignment with what we're doing now. And then the next page would be what we would look like next year. If we have a traditional graduation. These are the graduation date and times for next June. And we're gonna all keep our fingers crossed that everything's gonna work through and we're gonna have a traditional graduation next year. So with that being said, the recommendation would be to promote option number two. And for you all to consider option two to be the recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Rock, Ms. Tanner, can you go back to the previous slide real quick? Do you mean 2021 then?
Oh goodness, good catch there, Dr. Gabriel. Good job. Yes.
Okay, I I I thought that's what you meant. I thought that's what you meant. That's okay, you're fine.
A lot of eyes went on this too, a lot of.
It's okay, all right.
Sorry about that, I apologize.
No problem. Okay, questions? Let's see, let me go. Yes, yes, you're playing.
We're in a formal session. The recommendation from the committee is option two. So I'd like to move to adopt option two. Calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Basine and then Mr. Jordan, we will do two minutes.
Just a a couple of comments and questions. So yes, I I I think like a lot of others, I I really like option two and I really liked option two before. This pandemic. Are there discussions going on right now about any? I know this is the plan that's being recommended now, but are there discussions about an alternative? Calendar? Should we not be able to start school in September or have a delayed start to the school year?
We just don't have enough information at this time to make a recommendation for any altered calendar. But certainly, as you know, the models change and we've been given additional guidance from our State Department and from the Governor's Office. We would certainly bring that information to you for consideration.
Sure, okay. And the other the other point is, you know, I know a few several months ago. I had raised the question about the pre-Labor Day start. And that's something that we have been advocating for with our legislators for the past, I know probably the entire time, at least. know probably the entire time, at least I've been on the board and I know much longer than that. So now that we're at a point where we can actually do something about it, and I don't believe that we were the only one in the region that was advocating for that. So I wonder if Ms. Rock, if you can share, you know, why we can't start or why the what the barrier is in the region to not start before Labor Day, aside from, you know, the tourism piece.
There's, there's not a barrier. We take our leads on the superintendents. So when the superintendents come to us with guidance that they would like to present, then we take it from there. So once the superintendents give us that, go ahead, then that's how we will develop the calendar.
Okay. All right. I thought I heard something about the Calendar Committee.
Well, the Calendar Committee are individuals like myself.
Right.
That we work at the pleasure of the superintendent. So we have discussed it with them and, you know, we just, we're waiting on feedback.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Yes. Mine is similar to that. In the, in the adoption of the calendar, does it restrict us in any way if we decided to look at year round schools, you know, still with the same number of days? Or if for some reason, we determine we wanted to have some schools with extended hours or extended date? So I just want to get a sense of in adopting this calendar, which I'm fine with the recommendation, but it doesn't hinder us or inhibit us in any way if based upon the survey and the data and what we end up seeing in terms of student performance and student needs, that we could come back and have some individual schools that could provide additional learning time or days for, for students if needed.
I think ultimately, the decision is that the board's decision, Mr. Jordan. So I don't, you know, think there's anything that would prohibit you from having those conversations and moving forward if that was the will of the board.
Yeah. So thank you for that. I would ask even during, in this pandemic, that that be something that the board consider as you all get an opportunity to do more assessments as far as student attendance and performance and student needs, that it be driven based upon the needs of our students.
So for clarification, Mr. Jordan, you're looking for a possible, a calendar within a calendar or would that be a whole division calendar for just individual schools? Because I know Virginia Beach has done that before.
Well, I hadn't, I wasn't thinking of it in that way. I just wanted to make sure that in adopting the calendar, it didn't prohibit the board and the superintendent or the governor's team from being able to come back and saying if we wanted to have individual schools for some reason to operate on a different calendar, that that option would be available to us. You know, knowing we'd have to get community input and teacher input and all the things that are involved with that type of program. I just think it's something we need to be considering in light of the number of instructional days and hours that, that we know we've been dealing with, the loss of during this pandemic.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that, and that was much better stated than what, that was exactly what I was trying to get at in my, in my question about having an alternative.
Right. Okay. Just hang on one second. Let me get to Ms. Camson and Ms. Martin.
Ms. Rock, I do recall the concerns that came up in Virginia Beach about the Jewish holiday, the conflicts with the beginning of the year, which was certainly very legitimate that we should, you know, be sensitive to other people's religions and all. Was that even mentioned? Because isn't it this coming year? Is it twenty two?
No.
It's twenty two. Okay. Never mind. But would we think about that next year?
It's duly noted.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Martin?
Hi. So I agree with Rodney. I'm really excited about the possibility of exploring year round schooling and other schooling options, especially with us starting, still continuing to start so late in September and having the children, you know, there are a lot of camps that aren't available. There's just, and we're, you know, it's really kind of an issue that's being overlooked when people are, you know, we're starting to open our states back up and parents are starting to go back to school. And, and again, it goes back to the equity and how, you know, how children, some children haven't been able to really get the educational, you know, I know that again, don't let me take, I'm not taking away from anything that's being done because like I'm, what I said earlier, I, I am so proud of this district, but there are, you know, students who may need some more opportunity on, you know, with academics before starting an regular school year or however we want to look at it. So I guess my question is, is what is really drive, driving our deadline for the calendar? So is this, you know, and I appreciate the survey and all of that information. I think that's really helpful. But if we were to have that conversation, could we have it sooner rather than later? And, you know, again, what is driving that decision? What would our deadline be?
Well, we have a deadline with the state to submit our calendar, which is coming up very quickly. But we can certainly start discussing calendar much earlier in the school year. It's traditionally, of course, been in early March, but now we're, because of the pandemic in May, but there's nothing stopping us from discussing the calendar much earlier.
So, so what I would say is that at this time, we should support the recommendation of the administration, but always know that we are going to be responsive to the students and families that we serve within our division. And if it is determined through the feedback that we receive, through the expertise of Dr. Birdsong and her staff, that our students would benefit from the additional learning time of a dictated calendar that requires year round school, whether that be for some schools or for other schools, that we leave ourselves open to that option. Because we should definitely not leave anything on the table. I mean, we right now, we're having to work outside of the traditional boundaries. We should not hinder the learning experience of any of our students because we are just traditionally used to ending school in June and starting school in September. Whatever they need, we should be providing it to them. So I'm, I'm open to that and that would mean that we again approve what the recommendation is, but then leave ourselves open. And we can still have further discussion about that. But for planning purposes, I know that it's very important that we approve some type of a calendar at this meeting. And Dr. Birdsong, if there's anything further that you would like to add, I'll definitely defer to your expertise.
No, I, I just think, you know, and Ms. Rock alluded to this, there's nothing that prohibits us from starting with planning earlier. And again, traditionally, we started planning for the calendar in March, but we could start earlier.
All right. Okay. Did I get to everybody that had their hand up? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll. Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
He's muted.
Aye. Someone doesn't want to hear me.
Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Maybe someone muted her.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel? Aye. Thank you. The motion carries. The next item that we have on our agenda is the approval of the Special Education Annual Plan, item three point zero seven. Dr. Birdsong? Ms. Tanner, if you don't mind, can you put us back into gallery view?
Yes, just one moment.
Thank you.
Did you hear me at all? I was muted, but I felt like you were here. So I'll just start over again. Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. So this evening, Dr. Richardson is here with us to provide an overview of our proposed annual plan. Certainly, we know that you'll have some questions and feedback for us and we're happy to hear that. We also have a voice from the field this evening. Dr. Gibson is here with us and she's going to tell us, share with us some information about how she's utilized the coordinated early intervening services at Granby High School and some data around that. And so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Richardson.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, school board members, Dr. Birdsong, staff and community members. I truly appreciate this opportunity to present the Special Education Annual Plan to you. And I will go ahead and get started with the PowerPoint. Okay. Next page is fine. Okay. So the annual plan is an application for federal grant funding under the provisions of IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act. Funding is determined by a formula along with our December one count. The funding flows through the Virginia Department of Education to our school division. So you'll often hear to the funds referred to as flow through funds. It's an agreement between Norfolk Public Schools and the Virginia Department of Education. It is contingent upon final approval and therefore slight adjustments may be made to the budget numbers. As required, the Special Education Advisory Committee reviewed the plan on March thirty first. The CAC Chair, Mr. Moynihan, did submit a letter to the board members and email today with some feedback from the Special Education Advisory Committee. But I do want you to know that we did incorporate their thoughts and ideas as well as members of the community during that meeting. The plan is submitted annually to the Virginia Department of Education. Next slide, please. Upon approval by the school board, the superintendent does certify that the school division will comply with Part B of IDEA, including requirements of Section six thirteen. And that directs the use of funds. It determines the allowable activities that the funds may be used for. It also certifies that the superintendent will, the superintendent certifies the school division will comply with IDEA regulations, the Virginia regulations, and any revisions to the federal or state requirements that may occur. Next slide, please. As part of this, we have an interagency agreement for the jail. Each local school division that has a local jail in its jurisdiction must establish an interagency agreement. We have done so. There is a requirement that it is reviewed at minimum every three years. And as part of the annual plan, we have to check a box that says whether or not we revised it. We did revise it this year earlier on in the beginning of the school year. Just the basics of the jail agreement, it's an agreement between us and the jail and we say what we are going to provide as far as teachers, staffing, supplies, resources, and the jail says what they're going to provide, safety measures, procedures, a space for us to work with students and all of that. And so we did update it just because it had been a little bit of time before we had met with the sheriff. And, and so we have a new jail agreement and it will be good for another three years unless we determine we need to update it sooner than that. Next slide, please. Okay. So what we do when we're sharing the information about the annual plan is we start with a report of the implementation of the previous school year's annual plan that you approved. So over a hundred and forty full-time positions were funded with flow through funds. That includes one administrator, which is a central office administrator, four clerical staff, seventy three paraprofessionals, one teacher specialist, forty teachers, and some speech and language therapists and occupational therapist hours. We did also use some funds for materials and resources to support direct services for students with disabilities. Next, please. Some of the highlights, we did, of course, offer professional development to our teachers in the area of literacy. We had middle school employment workshops, the youth career center, worked with students on career readiness and budgeting skills using interactive games. We have our Why Not fundraiser where students work at Why Not Pizza and a percentage of the proceeds support our programs, our career development program and post-secondary career development program. Our project search is a one-year post-grad program for students who are earning an applied studies diploma and it provides real life work experience in a hospital setting. We have our Start on Success program, which is employer-based for seniors who are receiving a standard or advanced diploma. And it includes a paid semester of employment in the community. Our transition tour bus parents were given an opportunity this year to tour various agencies to learn about services for students with disabilities. And we also follow that up with an agency transition fair. And we have PERT, a two-week comprehensive vocational evaluation. It's held during the summer at Wilson Workforce and Rehabilitation Center in Fisher'sville, Virginia. Next slide, please. All right. So we have, I know it's, it's a lot to read here, but there are a lot of things that I wanted to make sure to highlight. I'm not going to read all of it word for word because you can see it, but we did, we do collaborate regularly with the Special Olympics and we provide our big feet meet in October, our champions together in March, our little feet meet in April, and our young athletes in May. And in upcoming school year, we're going to make sure that we do a better job of making, of making you all aware of when those events are so that you can come out and support. We offer professional development for teachers. We offer literacy training through the UVA Struggling Readers Academy, and that was a collaboration with Curriculum and Instruction. We offered Wilson Foundation's training and support by a certified Wilson reading teacher to some of our schools, which we, which we have listed in our slide. We participated in letters training. So we now have a certified letters facilitator and that stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. We offered additional professional development for our teachers in the areas of transition, new teacher training, FBA BIP training, accommodations, manifestation determination review, responsibilities and compliance. We, we started for the first time our district-wide program professional learning communities. We developed a model classroom so that we could showcase our evidence-based practices for working with students with autism. And that's housed over at Little Creek. And so what we're able to do is actually bring our teachers into the model classroom so that we can provide professional development training and they can see examples of best practices. And they take that information right back into their classrooms and we're able to follow up with them to provide additional support. We also offered targeted classroom walkthroughs this past year so that we could give some feedback that was non-threatening. It was more coaching through a coaching model. We could offer feedback to our teachers. And then we offer increased support to our administrators. Next slide, please. So this is just a visual of some of the things I just talked about, Project Search, our youth career center, young athletes, little and big feet meet, our model classroom. There are a couple of pictures from there. There's a small portion of our classroom walkthrough checklist. We have a couple of our program specialists, sorry about the, had the names on there, but they were primarily responsible for developing the model classroom and they did a really nice job with that. And I hope you have a chance to come out and check it out. Next slide, please. I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about coordinated early intervening services because I'm not sure you had an opportunity to truly hear enough about it. Norfolk Public Schools was identified as having significant discrepancies and significant disproportionality in the rate of suspension and expulsion of students with disabilities by race, specifically among Black African-American students with disabilities for suspensions greater than ten days. So everything I'm going to share with you is based on that subgroup. Again, it's African-American students with disabilities with suspensions that were greater than ten days, and that's cumulative and consecutive. Throughout the division, the most frequent types of infractions were disruption, harassment, insubordination, fighting and disrespect. The highest suspension rates, after we reviewed our data, were in grades six, seven, eight and nine, and therefore, our CEAS plan is focused in secondary schools. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So for the 1819 school year, we did set aside the required 15% of our funds to address the significant discipline disproportionality. We hired a CEES specialist who oversaw and coordinated the implementation of the activities and interventions. We hired a CEES social worker in direct response to the feedback that we received from schools and that we received from our Special Education Advisory Committee. Because some of the things that, some of the things that were being brought to our attention, when I get down to the next one, our paraprofessionals. Our paraprofessionals, they are awesome, and they are boots on the ground, and they are working really hard with children and families. But some of the things that were coming up, and all the hard work that they're doing, are just beyond their level of expertise. So we heard from our schools, we heard from our CAC, and they said, "We need some trained staff to be able to support these students and families." And we were able to bring in a CEES social worker. Subsequently, we've also been able to bring in a CEES school counselor, and both of those staff are dedicated to the 12 schools that we support. Training was provided to 24 paraprofessionals. They provide direct support and tiered interventions to students in our 12 schools. And they are working to, they are working directly with the students and families and the staff. And we purchased instructional materials, and we offered professional development to increase the capacity of staff to support students in the general education environment. Next slide, please. So school divisions that demonstrate disproportionality for three consecutive years are required to set aside 15% of the IDEA Part B funds. Disproportionality is calculated using a risk ratio. Our school division will be, will continue to be required to set aside funds until we do not demonstrate disproportionality for one year, and the risk ratio is greater than three. Keep in mind that the data is not current for school year 1920. And I just showed some of the data there. The risk ratio in 1415, 1516, 1617 required us to set aside funds in 1920. The risk ratio in 1516, 1617, and 1718 required funds to be set aside in 2021. The risk ratio from 1819 will determine whether or not we set funds aside in school year 2122. The point in that is what we do right now makes a difference. Of course, it makes a difference now, but it also makes a difference a couple of years down the line as well. We will receive our notice of disproportionality in October. That's when we receive our letter telling us whether or not we have continued to show the disproportionality. To date, in school year 1920, our overall suspension numbers of African-American students with disabilities suspended over 10 days decreased by over 50% from school year 1819. I do realize that school ended in March. However, this is still significant, and it's important to note. So in school year 1819, we had 140 students, and school year 1920, 58 students. We also showed a reduction 3.7% to 1.4% of all students with disabilities who were suspended over 10 days, regardless of race. However, the disproportionality for students with disabilities slightly increased, from 88% to 89% for the suspensions for African-American students with disabilities over 10 days, versus the suspensions for non-African-American students with disabilities went down from 12% to 11%. So even that slight difference actually caused our risk ratio to increase that year. Next slide, please. Schools supported by CEES include the five high schools and the following middle schools: Zelia Gardens Middle School, Blair Middle School, Lake Taylor Middle School, well, Lake Taylor School now, but we only supported 6 through 8. Norview Middle School, Northside, Roughness, and Southside STEM Academy, 6 through 8. Using the suspension data, you will see the following percentage in the reduction of students who were suspended. And I won't read all those, too, you can see those there, but just to give you a number to keep in mind. Granby High School, for example, since we have Dr. Gibson, in school year 1819, there were 24 students who were suspended over 10 days, whereas in 1920, there were 14. So a significant reduction in the numbers. Another big one is Blair Middle School. In 1819, they suspended 19 students, African-American students with disabilities, more than 10 days, but in 1920, it was only nine. So we're doing some hard work out there in the schools. The schools are doing some hard work, and you know, we're really proud of all of the efforts that they're putting forth. There were schools that were not supported by CEES that also demonstrated a reduction, and I wanted to make sure to list those here, and these are elementary schools. We have a multidisciplinary team, and we work to identify areas of focus to help us know what areas we needed to focus on as part of our CEES plan. And we use the IDEA Addressing Success Gaps: Indicators of Success rubric. So some of the areas that we identified as a division that we need to work on are culturally responsive instructional interventions, staff preparedness for linguistic diversity among students and families, division facilitated participation of diverse families, use of differentiated instruction. Evidence-based behavioral interventions and supports need to be embedded in a multi-tiered framework and implemented with fidelity. A tiered response methods need to include academic and behavioral interventions and supports. And a comprehensive school discipline policy should be in place and implemented. And so we are, all of our departments are working together to make sure that we address these areas. And as you've seen before with many of Dr. Birdsong's presentations, these areas are, she is very committed as well to supporting these areas. So we're working together as a team to make sure that we are supporting our students and our families. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we have a quick voice from the field. Dr. Gibson would like to share her experiences with CEES initiatives and her building.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, school board members, and everyone in attendance this evening. Thanks for the opportunity to share Granby's story in working with the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention Services Program. We call it the CEES Program. The CEES Program was initiated to decrease out-of-school suspensions at the beginning of the 201819 school year. It provides services through the efforts of two paraprofessionals, Ms. Kathleen Bruton and Ms. Linda Kearney, and a teacher supervisor, Ms. Kimberly Singerton. Over the course of the last two years, Ms. Kearney and Ms. Bruton have provided in-person services to at least 54 students who were identified as students who needed interventions in order to avoid suspensions. In 2018, 31 students remained in the program through the end of the school year. Over the course of this school year, we've had 23 students participate in the program. And this group includes incoming ninth graders who have participated in the program as eighth graders, seven of our original group, and other students who have been identified through the course of the year. Of course, we always get parent permission to work with the students. Each school day, Ms. Kearney and Ms. Bruton check in with their students by greeting them in the mornings, by visiting their classrooms each block, and by moving them back to their classrooms when they walk out or are removed from class. The CEES parents work in the halls, in the classes with students, and in the cafeteria. They constantly talk with students to guide good decision-making. During the school day and after-school hours, the CEES parents contact parents through phone calls and through emails to keep them informed of students' experiences and needs. After-school, students in the CEES program are invited to participate in mentoring activities where they work with other teachers in the building. We quickly realized that we had to think of ways to motivate the students to attend the mentoring sessions. As Ms. Kearney and Ms. Bruton have worked with the students, our teachers and administrators have participated in professional development sessions during the school year and in summer workshops in 2019. These experiences have allowed us to learn how trauma and poverty negatively impact student school success. Our story at Granby is that every day, we will be there to guide and to help. We realize that it takes time for students to develop. We will continue to build in professional development that helps us understand how to work with our students to keep them in school. We hope that we can receive professional development that includes a school-wide, year-long series on restorative practice to support students. We will stay the course. We are seeing individual success stories, and we trust that the work being done today with our students who participate in the CEES program will pay off in the future. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. Okay, next slide, please. So what is the CEES plan? Well, the following initiatives were implemented and will continue for fiscal year 21. We're providing direct support to students in 12 schools from trained paraprofessionals. They receive training on a monthly basis. We're using evidence-based practices and tiered supports to increase self-advocacy, resilience, self-regulation, behavior management, decision-making, self-care, and increasing academic success. And resources are being shared with teachers and staff. Of course, the key is relationship building. We are offering direct support to students and staff from a dedicated CEES social worker and a CEES school counselor. They are using evidence-based practices and strategies to address barriers to attendance, achievement, and progress. They are working through inter-agency collaboration to support children and families, and they are offering counseling, resources, and referrals for families as well. We offer a resource library to our 12 schools. It includes student journals, pre-referral intervention strategies, positive alternatives to suspension, disrupting poverty, fostering resilient learners, all of the great research-based resources. We actually ordered materials and supplies, and we sent a resource library to each of our 12 schools, so that their teachers would have access to that. Of course, they have direct support from our department, the Learning Support Special Education Services Department. We offer professional development to teachers and staff. We're also offering professional development to our administrators as well. One thing that we're going to add in fiscal year 21 is we're going to open up the professional development opportunities to elementary schools. And you can see some of the areas there. Socially-emotional learning, equitable discipline, implicit bias, culturally responsive practices, mental health first aid, trauma-informed practices. These are all areas that we've already provided PPE in, but will continue to do so. Beyond the Bell, we're offering after-school mentoring programs, peer mentoring, trauma-informed anger management, community engagement. We are offering homeschool connections and academic tutoring. Right now, one of the things we're looking at is some of our CEES-referred students who may be in danger of failing. We're looking at providing some additional tutoring during the summer for them to help them prepare for the upcoming school year, and to help them submit some of their missing work. We continue to work with our multidisciplinary team to review student progress, analyze data. We offer, we obtained survey feedback from our professional development, from our CEES paraprofessionals, from our CEES administrators, and we review school discipline, attendance, behavior, academic data on a regular basis. And we'll continue to make recommendations for district-wide initiatives and policy input. So on the next slide, I try to give you another visual of some of the things that we've offered. You see some of our professional development. We have some of our own Norfolk Public Schools teachers that provide the professional development after their work hours. We're very thankful for that. We've got a talented group of teachers here. We also have, you know, examples from our resource library, from our CEES Summer Professional Development Institute, some student resources. We're using Rethink for our social-emotional learning, and that is something we've opened up to our families through June as well. Next slide, please. All right, so hopefully that explains what we've been doing with some of these funds. And we're going to continue to do some similar activities, but we want to, we want to move things forward based on the responses that we've received, again, from the school board, from our Special Education Advisory Committee, from our community, our parents. Our Parent Resource Center is, has been doing a lot of workshops and getting lots and lots of feedback from parents, and we love it. So we're definitely going to work to be responsive to the needs of our community. So for Section 611, we will propose to fund the same administrator, four clerical staff, 73 paraprofessionals, one teacher specialist, and 40 teachers. So there's no change there. We will still set aside our 15% for our CEES and our private school funds, which is our PSA. Okay, next slide, please. So here again is the CEES. We'll fund 24 paraprofessionals, one specialist, one social worker, professional development for staff, and we also pay for subs for staff attending during the school day. And we're paying for direct services and interventions for identified students, as well as instructional materials. Our proportionate set-aside funds for parentally placed students in private schools, that is going to purchase instructional materials, a part-time speech-language therapist who provides services to our students in those private schools, and materials and supplies. Next slide, please. And then our Section 619, our preschool funds. This grant supports special education personnel and early childhood special education classrooms. So we wish we had more here, but that's okay, we'll take what we get. And we fund two early childhood special education teachers and one early childhood paraprofessional. Included in the cost are allocations for substitutes, daily subs and long-term subs, as well as instructional materials and supplies. And next slide, please. That is my presentation, and I'm going to open it up for questions in one second, but we do recommend that the school board approve the Special Education Annual Plan and authorize a superintendent to submit the plan to the Virginia Department of Education. But before we go to questions, I did want to just very, very quickly respond to something that you all were asking earlier. What are we doing for students with disabilities? How are we supporting our students with disabilities right now? And I want you to know, we're not quite ready to offer teletherapy to answer that question. So we're not doing that yet. Our kiddos are not one-to-one yet, and our staff haven't been trained to provide teletherapy yet. But what we are doing, our related service staff are holding office hours, just like our teachers. We have an expectation that they are reaching out to parents, just like the teachers are. We have created a Learning in Place website. So I would like, encourage everybody to go to our Learning Support website and click on Learning in Place. And you will see a ton of resources, including related services resources that we've shared there. We're also, the related services staff are actually reaching out to families. Sometimes they're emailing packets, they're mailing packets, dropping them off. I've dropped some packets off myself. I know that one of the families, I was giving them a pack of pencils, and I asked them if they have a pencil sharpener, and they didn't. I said, "Don't worry, I got it. Sharpen the pencils before I drop them off, that's easy, I got it." But they are collaborating with the teachers. We are communicating with our parents through letters. On our website, you'll see a March letter, an April letter. I just posted a May letter for parents. We are, we did develop some differentiated packets for students in self-contained programs to make sure that the learning materials were appropriate. We have a high expectation for communication with all of our families, and I'm waiting for some data to find out who we're not reaching, because we're going to work even harder to make sure that we get to those families. Our Parent Resource Center has offered to help parents develop visual supports if they're not able to do that at home on their own. Our teachers are contacting our department, and our specialists have been working very hard, our coordinators and our administrators have been working hard to support our schools. And we, in the new parent letter, we did include a parent survey. There's a link to a parent survey, so that we can collect some feedback from our parents, and they can let us know how they're doing. So we do encourage parents to fill that out. And if they can't access it online, contact me directly, jrichardson1@mps.k12.vad.us, and I'll make sure it gets to you. All right, thank you so much for this opportunity, and please ask any questions that you have.
Sorry, Dr. Birdsong, anything further? Okay, okay, so go ahead, and I'll start with questions. Okay, Ms. Martin, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson, for your excellent presentation. I just want to say, as the liaison to the CAC, we did have a meeting. We got a lot of wonderful feedback, and Dr. Richardson did a really good job of answering the questions. We reviewed the plan, and everyone in the committee and community members were able to answer questions. And I think she handled it very well, and I think the people were, even if they didn't get the answer they wanted, I think they were really pleased with with the answers that were given and that they were heard. One of the things that I'm concerned about is that with taking 15% of the IDEA money to the grant to fund CAC, and I applaud you all on the great strides you've been making to help the students who had, who have been identified as as disproportionately suspended and disciplined. So thank you for all those successes. But my concern is that as we improve our ratings, I guess, we are more restorative justice in our discipline practices, which I advocate for 100%, but as we do that, then that 15% will no longer have to set that aside, correct?
Correct.
So because we've made such great strides with this, the C's program, which is what it's implemented to do, and from your presentation, it seems that we are accrediting the C's program and all the, you know, that it's funded and the resources is put in place to help us decrease those numbers, those suspension numbers. So once, as we reach our goal of having less students suspended for long term, how are we, is there a plan set in place to still sustain the services that are in place under C's that C's would have previously funded?
Yes, and we are, like I said, the departments are working together on that. I know that Dr. Lanz and the Department of Student Support Services and I and some of her team, we are going to be getting together so that we can develop a comprehensive plan for the division. So we look forward to sharing some more information about that in the future. I know one of the initiatives that the School Division, and it's actually in our, we mentioned it in our plan, but the School Division is working with the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support, and that program is kind of, it starts out in just a couple of schools, and then it's expanded each year. And so that is a PBIS-focused program. So a lot of, you know, what we do with C's is also, you know, PBIS-focused. So that's just one example of an initiative that is supported by the division that's not related to C's, that's going to be sustainable, that's going to help increase the capacity of our teachers and staff to support our students and families, and to help us get those increased, you know, academic results by keeping kids in school. So absolutely, we are going to continue to work together to make sure that we have a comprehensive plan in place once we no longer have to set aside the 15%.
And those schools that were not receiving direct C's money, that also have done a really good job of addressing the situation in those schools, can you explain how that occurred simultaneously?
Maybe because they're awesome? One of the things to keep in mind is some of those schools really didn't have high numbers. So for example, you know, one of the schools, they may have only suspended one student, one African-American student with a disability in 1819, but in 1920, they didn't suspend any. So, you know, that's still, you know, a significant change, but we're only talking about the difference in one student. Of course, every student counts, and every student matters, but, you know, and just looking at those percentages, I don't want you to think that there's large numbers at each school of students that are being suspended. So in some of the elementary schools, and a couple of them in fact, there were only one, there was only one student in 1819 and zero students in 1920. But I think it's just, you know, all the schools are really working hard to address some of the discipline challenges. They really are. And, you know, and some of them are just, you know, experiencing success. And, but that's a good question, and I think that that's part of what I'll do as well, is go in and check in with them and ask them, "Hey, you know, what are you guys doing? What's working?" We want to share that. So thank you.
Okay. Basine?
All right. Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Dr. Richardson, thank you so much for this review of the plan. I have a few questions. So the disproportionality risk ratio, is that in Virginia, is it school-level specific or is it, does it take into account school level and then a comparison with the state?
So it's based on the data from our Discipline, Crime, and Violence Report that we submit each year, so that's where they get the data from. But it's a proportion, just looking at our own, our own division-wide data. So the state does determine what the ratio is going to be, and then most of the divisions are using the same calculation, using their own data, except for the very tiny divisions, they have to use an alternate calculation.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, so, so on, let's see, slide, the slide which has what is, what is the plan? Let's start there. So there is a lot of great information here and a lot of great strategies here that tied into what Ms. Martin was just saying is something that I'd like to see expanded, you know, division-wide, and some of the things that I know myself and other board members have advocated for, you know, in terms of increasing social and emotional supports, mental health, first aid, you know, a lot of, a lot of great strategies are here. And so I'd like to hear more about what outcomes are you looking at to determine that these strategies are working for our students? And you may not be able to answer that, you know, right now, but, you know, that's something that I, you know, in these presentations, would like to hear more about.
Yeah. And our, so just so you know, in our plan, we do have to list measurable outcomes, but really, the state doesn't ask for a lot of data. Interestingly enough, they want to know how many student, how many of the students that received support were subsequently found eligible for special education, two years from the first time that they received support. So we have to track that, and that's just kind of off the subject. But interestingly enough, last year, we only had one, two students, but one of them transferred during the process. So we only actually had one student of all the students, of about 150 students that we supported, that actually went through the special education process and was found eligible. And kind of, I guess, the thought on that is maybe there are some students that need some other type of support interventions, and it's not really a special education issue. So they do ask us to track students who are found eligible for special education. But we set our own measurable outcomes, and so what we're looking at is a decreased rate of suspension with a focus on the grade levels that we are supporting for that year. We're looking for a decrease in out-of-school suspension by 10%. We're looking at a decrease in out-of-school suspension for Black or African-American students in the schools receiving C's support. We're looking at the number of teachers or staff who are accessing the professional development opportunities, and we are just making sure that we're providing recommendations to inform policy or procedure. So that'll be new for this year. So we didn't do that last year, we'll be doing that this year. So one of the things is, again, this is a very specific subgroup of students, right? It's African-American students with disabilities suspended more than 10 days. So it's not, what I'm reporting on is not the suspensions for African-American students, period, in the division. So, you know, you're not necessarily going to see the same, you know, increase or decrease when you're comparing those two data sets. But I just wanted you to know that the outcomes that we're looking at are, you know, a decreased out-of-school suspension rate by 10%, and then, of course, the subgroup of African-American students with disabilities. And then, and then what we do is we collect a lot of more anecdotal data, survey data, satisfaction data. We are, we stay in contact with our schools to determine the impact of the professional development that they participated in. You know, we receive the feedback from our students, our parents, who have participated in C's initiatives, and our peer professionals and our administrators.
Right. Thank you. And I guess I think about this even more broadly beyond what is required, you know, in this report. I'm also thinking about our accountability plan and thinking about, you know, the way we look at our infractions, you know, and looking at that by various subgroups. So, you know, as it relates to this particular plan, you know, one thing that I have questions around and have questions around every month when we get our student support, you know, docket, is, you know, students who, I believe, one of the infractions was disruption, you know, why, why would a child? I'm assuming that it's the disruption plus some other infraction, but to have longer than 10 days, you know, is it something that I question around, you know, and I question, you know, the manifestation determination process and the pattern analysis and all of that. And so that's something that, you know, I would like to at some point hear more about, and if we need to strengthen that process so that that in itself may mitigate the number of out-of-school suspensions. And the other, other question, I'll just put this out there too, the one budget, budgetary request, you know, that I've made the last few years is having a board-certified behavioral analyst. And with all of the positions that are included in this plan, I'm wondering if the Department of Learning Support, wondering and I guess asking the question, why that particular position hasn't been considered or could be considered going forward?
Yeah. So the first thing is, I'm more than happy to do a separate presentation on more of the background data for C's because a lot of the things you're talking about, we did disaggregate all of that. So, you know, we broke it down to each student, each infraction, and like I said, some of the suspensions are cumulative, so there may be, you know, multiple suspensions for disruption or disrespect. So, but yes, I'm more than happy to do another presentation or just to put together the data to share with you all. So yes, we have considered that, and we do have that available that we can share. As far as the BCBA position, it's not included in this annual plan, but I want to let you know that we are very committed to that. I 100% support it. Dr. Birdsong 100% supports it. She has talked directly with me, and we are, you know, trying to determine how we can make it happen, but we are fully committed and we are fully, you know, working together on that. We have heard you loud and clear, and we're right there with you, and it's coming.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
You're not just, you're not just waiting around to, sometimes they're hard to find, but we're committed to it.
Right.
Just so you'll know, Mrs. Basine, we, Dr. Richardson and I did have this exact conversation about that, and while we believe, you know, because of the revenue shortfalls that we're getting ready to face, more likely than not, we're not going to be able to hire the additional behavioral specialist that we talked about pre-March, April 22nd. And so I've had a conversation with Human Resources through Dr. Cataldo that if we have a vacancy in that area, that the next person hired must have this certification.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm just scrolling down to make sure that I'm not missing anybody before we get a motion on the floor. Okay, Ms. Martin?
Real quick, wanted to say that it's also supported, the board-certified behavioral analyst position is also supported by the CAC Committee.
Okay. Wonderful. Wonderful. Okay. All right. All right. And just to wrap things up, I would definitely say that special education was a very important item that we made sure that we discussed in our accountability plan. It is, if we, once we get to the budget portion of our meeting, there was definitely a lot of thought put in by Dr. Birdsong to preserve a variety of entities that will help us with special education. We know that Norfolk Public Schools, when you compare us to the state and to the national average, we have much room to grow, and our commitment is firm with where we stand on putting the supports in place with special education, but also to lean on our university partners to help with the growing teachers who are coming into special education, but also into the healthcare providers that we have as partners with our School Division. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and get a motion on the floor.
Dr. Gabriel, I have my hand up. I don't know if you're able to see me or not.
Oh, I didn't. I, okay, go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Just, just real quick, want to just like to echo the idea of the board being able to see the disaggregated report. That was one of the things I had some questions about. And also related to that, so I was trying to see the report as it gets filed at the state, because when I was, received the presentation, I was trying to look at some of the data in our report and some of what's on the school quality profile with some of these other reports, just couldn't figure it out. But when we, when we filed this information with the state, the report that you mentioned, is that something that is available and accessible from the VDOE site?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't believe that it's on the VDOE site. But it is, it is public information. I'm just not sure where, where it's posted. So I'll find out, and I can get back to you on that.
Yeah. If the, we can, if you copy that, that would be helpful. Other than that, I think others have already addressed questions and given kudos, so I ditto the kudos and ditto the recommendations and concerns as well. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the Special Education? Let me see here. Annual plan.
I move to approve the Special Education Annual Plan.
Second.
Ms. Smith seconded. Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll. Basine?
Aye.
Hampson? Hampson?
Sorry, I was trying to get myself unmuted. Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, 3.08.
Madam Chair, before we move on to the next one, I'd just like to make a point here. We're now four and a half meetings into this meeting, virtual meeting, getting work done here. We have an agenda, and I'd just like to remind those individuals who are coming next to be mindful of the time, be mindful of the presentation time, and also for my colleagues, if you're setting a time, you know, really pulling in the palm of turkey's here that speak once and then we come back around, just so we make sure everyone's heard, but then we can also take care of this business at the time. I know many of us haven't moved and haven't gotten out of these seats, so disrespectful. Kind of help us keep things moving.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton.
Dr. Birdsong, discussion of the Career and Technical Education Plan?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Mrs. Goschen is here with us this evening, and she will be presenting to you the Career and Technical Education Plan K-12 for next year for your input and feedback. We have already had a, she and I and Dr. Cataldo have reviewed the plan, and a lot of what's in this plan was reviewed with you last year, and so Mrs. Goschen will make sure she highlights the, what's new in this plan. So thank you very much for your time and attention this evening. Mrs. Goschen?
Good evening to everyone. I trust that you and your families are continuing to do well. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening to give a very high-level overview of CTE pre-K through 12, and that's specifically what we will focus on next. Taking a look at what CTE has to offer, we are definitely within the realm of looking at the different components and what goes into career and technical education pre-K through 12 to ensure that our students have a successful journey down college, career, and civic readiness. It will also give you a good idea of the Perkins overview, and it does not entail any new initiatives or anything previously discussed about something else. We're particularly talking about pre-K through 12. Next slide, please. In looking at what we do for career and technical education, we look at it by grade bands. We have elementary, middle, and high, and we focus on three I's. Elementary is introduction, where you take a look at career awareness and exploration. That's more of your career fairs, your after-school programs, and pooling resources in career awareness into the elementary level for introduction. Middle is infusion, when you have more of the courses that are actually taught. Some are six, eight courses, and others are credit-bearing. You're looking at career development, planning, and exposure. In your middle school, you have your academic career plan, which is required of all middle schoolers, and then you also have your middle school programming, where you have middle school computer science for your business and IT. You have your STEM program, and you have your FACS program, which is more of your culinary. Also, things that we have going into our middle school, we've restructured. We are moving forward with the Apple Pathway. That will continue to bring, everyone can code, cyber literacy expansion, and other host information that goes into middle school programming. That is across all divisions. Everyone teaches just about the same courses with the exceptions of some nuances depending on the specialty area. Everyone teaches just about the same courses with the exceptions of some nuances depending on the specialty area of a school. When we look at high school, you've moved on to immersion. And so there you're building your pipeline. Elementary is introduction, middle school is infusion, high school is immersion. When we speak of immersion, you're talking about getting students ready for post-secondary transition and experiences. These individuals are doing a variety of things. They're all high school credit bearing classes, some are dual enrollment, some are AP. There's a variety of things that go on. So when we speak of career and technical ed, we think of introduction, infusion and immersion. Next slide, please. The components that make up all of the programs, starting at the bottom third is academic instruction. There are competencies that the state has set for us, there are competencies set by industry, and you integrate that with theory, uh, work-based learning and integrating core content. Your technical education is your lab, happens to be your labs. Work-based learning is the actual experience of students going out and being immersed into that. That is mostly done at the secondary level. Those three things are mostly at middle and high. Next slide, please. When you look at what we offer, as in the past I've shared, we offer over 86 courses. We have over 654 sections of classes that run each year. And we have over 12,000 students who, who are, uh, an enrollment account of 12,000 who participate. We have about 50 dual enrollment students and a host of AP. Looking at information technology, this is big for us simply because this is where a lot of courses fall. When you have computer information systems, where you see DE on the slide, that means that's dual enrollment. We have been doing dual enrollment with no, uh, technical center, high schools and along with Tidewater Community College for about five years now. When we get back to school in September, we will be up to eight CTE dual enrollment courses. That's in addition to the English and math that's already taught. Our numbers are growing. We have two new dual enrollment courses coming on this year. You see that you have IT fundamentals, entrepreneurship, that is virtual entrepreneurship and face-to-face. With junior achievement, our students are being, uh, business owners. They are going through shark tanks. They would have presented their businesses this May. However, we are out due to school closure, but our children are running actual businesses. That is part of work-based learning. They are turning a profit, they're getting business license, licenses, and we're very proud of them. We have programming advanced and we have AP computer science principles. On Mar, uh, May 26th, our students will participate in AP testing for that. They are not taking the paper and pencil test. They will be uploading digital portfolios as prescribed by college board. Cyber security, you have heard a lot about that because we piloted that last year. It is in every high school and we are doing very well with that. In September, we will add the second level of cybersecurity, which will be dual enroll with Tidewater Community College. In addition to that, we have a grant with Go Virginia, where our students will do, receive, uh, paid internships or not paid internships, just depending on the level of the student. The students will then move on to participate in bootcamps that I, a instructor will come in and those courses will also be virtual. For example, cyber security two, I'll take, um, Booker T. Washington, Granby High School in Norview. They will offer it at the same time. The teacher at Norview High School will teach the class and the other two schools will participate. Then we will rotate. Then the teacher at Booker T. Washington, where his area strength may be, he will take that particular area and then the other two schools will receive it. So we're doing some great things in those areas. And again, IT technology, IT is dual enroll. Next slide, please. STEM tech offerings, these are across the divisions. I'm not going to read all of them. In the engineering pathway, we have the, the technical draw pathway. When you see MS, that means that is a middle school course, that's a high school course being taught at the middle school, where they will receive credit. We have that across the division. Where you see an H, that means that we have honors level courses that await it. They await it due to the complexity of the math and the sciences that are required. And then we have a variety of simulations that go on throughout. Next slide, please. Business and hospitality, you're looking at marketing. This is not your traditional brick and mortar, as you know, times have changed. Our students are doing social media marketing. They are doing online businesses, businesses, sports management and a host of other things. Intro to culinary, most of you have already heard about our kickoff of ProStar, where we were blessed with that amazing, um, offering, where we have restructured our culinary program. Our culinary program is dual enroll with Tidewater Community College. And our students who graduate this year, they have a scholarship to move on to TCC. We're working with those students now. The courses that they've taken at Norfolk Public Schools transitions right into TCC where they go in with advanced standing. We also have culinary courses taught at the middle school level and that's where you see the MS. Next slide, please. Health and medical sciences, this is a great area because we continue to grow. We have dental, nursing, clinical, medical and pharmacy, all of which we are working to have, uh, pharmacy and clinical, medical dual enroll within the next school year. We're looking and working with various other entities for our sports medicine. That is done in collaboration with athletics. Our athletic, uh, der, excuse me, our athletic trainers are our teachers and our students become their assistants in the evening. They take sports medicine one, sports medicine two, and then work-based learning as they work the games and work in the different medical fields. In addition to that, we've added on EMR. So our students are being trained, emergency medical first responders, of which they take the, uh, EMR certification that's offered by the state and they could transition to work there. We also have fire training and we're adding the medical dispatch program. This particular, um, particular area here, the students leave not only with certification, but they leave with actual licensure. Right now, our nurses are preparing to take the NCLEX. Once they pass, guess what? They go right into the hospitals and begin working. Pharmacy, once they take that test and pass, they go into the different, uh, pharmacy areas. That is very, very important right now, given our current situation. They are actually ready to assume jobs and they have gotten a lot of offers. Should they get their license, they can transition right into especially the nursing and pharmacy. We also had a great, um, time. Our students were going to compete at the state competition and the day they were due to leave, schools closed and there were no long, any trips. That transitioned to a virtual competition and we've received word that many of our students came in first place last week and the week before. So we're very proud of them. Next, please. Work-based learning and speaking of that, those are the seven different areas of work-based learning that are available to our students. Our students are more than checking the box for graduation. These are viable options that our students participate in and that is assigned to all of the clusters and the pathways I've just spoken about. We look at all different things, school-based enterprise, for example. We just reopened credit unions across the division. Each of our schools, with the exception of Norview High School, has a fully functioning Chartway Credit Union, where students and teachers and administrators make deposits, withdrawals. It's part of our financial literacy program. And our last one was kicked off at Booker T. Washington, maybe a day or two before close, school closed and it was featured on one of our, uh, media outlets. We have a very strong work-based learning program of which the state invites us to present. Every June, we present to the rest of the state on what we're doing in work-based learning. So we're growing by leaps and bounds in that area as well. Some of our work-based learning is paid, some is on, on, some happen to be unpaid, but it's all about the relevancy and the connection for students as we get them ready for life in general. Next slide, please. This is just a list of the industry credentials that are assigned to our programs. Each of our students have an opportunity to take an industry credential that leads to the world of work. Those on the left side are those that we currently have plus more. Those on the right side are the ones that are being added in September. For example, ProStar is being added to our culinary. That's one of the higher levels of, uh, for culinary. Security Plus, Network Plus. If you have those certifications and you are in cybersecurity, you transition into some well-paid positions. Some of the other ones are A-plus certifications, medical things of that nature. We always try to go with the highest level of certification because we want our students to come out better prepared. So when they compete globally, they are ready to, uh, achieve just like anyone else. Next slide, please. Right here, although it seems a little small, every year, every school division in the state receives a report card. Our report card came out as we were walking out the door. I gave you the summary sheet that the state sends to us that goes to it. We, every year, the division has to, um, meet benchmarks that's set for everyone. The federal government sets the benchmarks for career and technical education. They are negotiated with the state of Virginia and they are sent to us. As you can see, we have met all of our benchmarks that were set for us. Just as with SOLs, your current year's rating is based on the previous year. So right now, 2018, 2019, established what we did. We, you see the accomplishments and we've met all things that we've needed for the federal government and the state. Next slide, please. Just to give a quick Perkins overview, what you're looking at, you received a full copy of the Perkins Plan. It gave you a detailed budget and all other sections. This is just an overview. It is based on last year's allocation. As no one has received allocations for this year, the state is waiting for the federal government to give them, um, how much Perkins will receive. Last year, we received $840,000. This is just for Perkins only. This does not take all of the other grants and things that we receive into consideration. When you look at it, we look at the bulk of it is spent on capital, outlay and equipment. Reason why the percentage is so large is our technology costs a whole lot more. For example, if you're doing one-to-one, yum, you may do an iPad and you may do a Chromebook. Those will not run our engineering programming or some of the others. We need a higher operating system that will, um, cover that, that allows us to upgrade. Also, if you have large, uh, bistros that you're running or things of that nature, you have to pay for the freezers and things of that nature. Technology for CTE costs a lot more, so that's where the bu, bulk of the money will go. You look at personal services, we normally do not put positions into, uh, CTE. We have one this year because we're looking at work-based learning and post-secondary transition. Someone to help the students and teachers with that. Contracted services, that's all the licensing we have to have because we do the bulk of our things online. And then some of the others, maybe some of the things where you have to pay teachers for travel and things of that nature, if they're traveling to state conferences. All professional development goes into contracted services. Our grant, whatever you get, you have to spend 60% of it in what's known as required. That's what the federal government outlines that must be done. That's for special populations. That is also for professional development for teachers. The rest is 40%, that is permissive. We use that money to pay for certifications for our students. Some of those certifications can be $200, depending on what license you're going after. That money is used to ensure that our students do not have to pay for their own certification. The first time they take it, we pay for it. If they choose to take something different or retake, then they normally pay for the retake, but nine times out of 10, we cover the cost. Next slide, please. This slide just gives you an overview, I won't go into too much details. In federal funds, you are required to do post-secondary follow-ups of students who graduated the previous year. This gives you a great idea of where our students go after they graduate. We have to call, contact, you name it, the students. This is for the class of 2018. The majority goes on to higher education, whether that's two-year, four-year or, uh, apprenticeship or training school. You have a percentage that goes on, will go on to the military. Some go straight into full-time and part-time employment and, uh, other percentages, others. Those are students that have not been connected to either one or at the time of the survey, they were either transitioning from school on into work, but they have been connected to some sort of post-secondary, but at the time of the survey, they were not or we were unable to contact them. Next slide, please. This slide gives you an idea of the breakdown of our business educators and our partners. Um, all that we do is with the support of our internal and external stakeholders. That particularly means our amazing advisory. Um, I cannot say enough about those group of, that group of individual. It is, it is unbelievable the things that they do for us that just go unnoticed. But whether they're teaching classes, doing work-based learning, securing grants for us, doing walkthroughs, evaluations of curriculum, you name it, they, that team is always there. We have the CTE overall advisory that the federal government gives you, the breakdown of the, the programs and the businesses that have to be involved. And then we split off because we're so large and there's so much work, we split into a variety of areas. Health medical sciences, I was working on our governor's health and STEM acad, uh, excuse me, Health and Medical Sciences Academy application. They focus on bringing forward the dual enrollment and connections and work-based clinicals with our students. Business and IT, those are the amazing folks that helped us bring forward our cyber program and it helped us to get some Go Virginia funding and helping us with that amazing Apple Pathway program that we have worked two or three years on, where we're bringing in a whole new Apple curriculum for our students. We will continue to be a multi-platform entity. However, we will use the Apple, um, iPads for all of our students. Our teachers all have it. We're doing Apple training while we're out and our teachers are working to be Apple teacher-trained. We also have trades and industrial, that's our Virginia Ship Repair, uh, Virginia Department of Education, that's work, excuse me, Virginia Department of Labor, who are working with us on youth registered apprenticeship. We have students who are at the technical center being hired by the individuals who work within the trades and industrial. That's whether it's HVAC, welding or electrical. Our next committee is our hospitality subcommittee. Those are the wonderful individuals who help us with ProStar on the state and national level. And then our sub, uh, committee for STEM. Those are the individuals that really keep us moving in terms of engineering. We have a tremendous, um, opportunity where we secured a grant with Old Dominion University. We have grants that have come in from the Department of, um, Defense and other areas that are helping us stand up amazing programming throughout, but that work could not be done without the teachers, what they do, the CTE staff, the support from our administration, but most importantly, the industry and the businesses and our parents.
Okay.
Next slide, please. That is it in a nutshell. I felt like I was going, uh, 60 miles an hour plus, but I hope I did a, uh, some justice in giving you an overview of pre-K through 12 CTE, what it means to us today, but the great things that will be happening for our teachers and students tomorrow. If you had any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer it. Please know, all the things that we just spoke about, those things have been up and running for years. Each year, they just get better and better. A lot of things that were piloted, we're going full force. Continuity and learning has occurred while school has been out. Our learning packets have been up. Our students, a good percentage are already virtual and we have been continuing to do the work that needs to be done. We'll continue to do that whenever we return to our new normal.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gosian. Um, we appreciate the presentation. And again, the matter before the board today is approval of the CTE plan. Um, so that way, um, Dr. Burzong can send it, um, forward for, uh, to the federal government. Um, what I'd like to do is, um, open the floor for any questions. I'm going to limit the time for the questions to one minute and response, um, can only be one minute, only because it is nine o'clock right now and I can just get a sense from, uh, everyone that we, we, we have another topic that we need to get to and that is the budget. So are there any questions as it relates to the approval of the CTE advisory, um, I'm sorry, the CTE, uh, education plan?
My question doesn't have anything to do with the approval. It's a great plan, but I, I'd like to know to what extent have we considered, do we plan on in a way that we can link what's happening at early childhood, um, center to STEM that should be at the South Side STEM Academy.
Okay.
That has been taken into consideration and it's already underway. That has been taken into consideration and it's already underway. The Apple Pathway that I have spoken about, that is Berkeley Campastella, Udon to Southside STEM Academy, Fairlawn, Lake Taylor School, and Lake Taylor High School. That is a 100% seamless STEM transition. They all have received their iPads. They are participating in the Apple Teacher Training. It started last week. I was in contact with Mrs. Rowntree, Mrs. Dick, James Richardson. We spoke with the elementary principals on this past Friday. The curriculum is being aligned, the training is being aligned. The equipment arrived about three weeks ago. And so the teachers went to Lake Taylor to pick up their equipment yesterday to be trained on it. Southside STEM will follow. We met with the Project Lead the Way Coordinator yesterday and talked about how we're going to rework that K2, 3, 5, 6, 8. And see a difference, not that they were not doing it, but we had to rework and for the full benefit. So you will see the pathway and you will see the pipeline and the difference.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, I want to make sure that I got everybody here. Mr. Jordan, anything?
I was just applauding the, the pathway. I know that's been in the works for quite some time and so I just wanted to applaud that and think it's great and think the plan is great. At a future time, I'd like to hear more about how we can expand opportunities, if it's appropriate in the work-study area and the capstone area for some of the additional pathways that you have to have.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, hold on one second, Ms. Camson, Ms. Basine, I see your hand up. Ms. Basine?
Okay, sorry. I too am so excited to hear about the pathways. The other, the other question I have around is around dual enrollment. And, you know, we've talked about expanding dual enrollment opportunities for our students. And I know we've gradually done some of that, but what do you foresee with especially around our current situation in terms of expanding opportunities, especially as we expand opportunities for virtual learning?
Currently, since we've been out, we have met with Todd Board of Community College literally every other week. That's Dr. Cortolo, Jonathan Coleman, and myself. We are continuing to plan forward. We will bring on board new CTE dual enrollment, but we're also looking and we've been working on year, all year, on the expansion of dual enrollment for math, English, and some of the other electives. Being out has not stopped the commitment to what we're doing. We are continuing to expand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I make my motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we accept the Career and Technical Education Plan for 2020, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll. Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
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 Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Excellent.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goshen, for the presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, it was so near to late in the evening. I know we were shooting for an earlier time.
Not a problem.
Okay. All right, let's see here. Next on the agenda, we are on to item 3.09, Resolution on the School Board Policy.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Clanton?
We are all have been receipt of the resolution. It's been posted to board docs. And so with that, because we are in a formal session, I move to adopt the resolution. Ask for a second and then to have any necessary discussion.
I accept that. Is there a motion to approve the Resolution on School Board Policies?
I move to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Camson. I will open up the floor for discussion.
Madam Chair, I'll start off as the maker of the motion. I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Cloud, our attorney. We've received a mock resolution from the Virginia School Board Association, providing us additional parameters in the respect of, in this particular time that we're in. The community and members of this board remember, at our last meeting, we adopted a resolution based on the emergency. And this essentially allows us the ability to place certain guidelines or policies that we have in place for which the federal, state, and local governments are putting on hold so that we can be able to operate, even have this meeting here today. So with that, I think that it gives us the additional cover that we need to be able to, to keep the focus of educating our students, making sure that we're taking care of our families in our district. And most importantly, then when we get back to a normal, that we can pick up and continue to do the work we need. Thank you.
Any further items for discussion? Mr. Jordan?
Yes, I'd like to ask if Attorney Cloud could actually take the time and review the resolution and share with us his, his assessment.
I'm happy to do that. Uh, and let me apologize, I'm in City Hall and they have cut the power. I do this time every night and so I don't have any lights. But I have my phone and I, I can use that. The warehouse clauses, warehouse clauses are just rhetoric, they have no legal effect. The, the legally effective part of the resolutions at the last page, the four sections. Section one is simply saying that you will suspend your policies or provisions within them to the extent those provisions in your policies have been suspended by the state or federal governments or their officials. And the reason for that is essentially you would be subject to the argument that notwithstanding the state and the federal waiver of these requirements, you are imposing them on yourselves and on your administration without this, this resolution. And the VSBA, which does your policy manual, as well as I think most of the policy manuals in Virginia, they came up with this resolution really as a way to deal with that argument, rather than give you amendments to 50 or 60 different policies that they would have to write and then you would have to make and then only change them again in a few months when these temporary waivers of requirements go away. The section two is just limiting this suspension for the period of time that the state and federal governments have limited their waivers, whatever that'll be. And, and this suspension is also for waivers that you have not received yet because there's a good chance that in the coming weeks and months, there may be other federal and state provisions, either statutory or regulatory, that are going to be waived. Then section three refers to any actions by the superintendent to waive regulations as opposed to your waiver of policies, superintendent regulations. Yeah, that requires notice to the board of any such actions. And then finally, section four is really addressing, and I, I would say it's, I don't think it's really necessary, but it was in the draft came, coming from the VSBA, so I left it. It's just acknowledging that in addition to waivers, both the state and federal government are passing laws that are temporarily in effect that may affect the operations of the public schools and that you recognize that and will abide by them. But of course, you would have to abide by them whether or not you had that provision in your resolution. An example, you know, I, I don't know if it was last week or the week before when the General Assembly met and passed their budget. Their budget, which is six or 700 pages long, also include various, in effect, temporary amendments to the Virginia Code in, in all sorts of ways that are, are only in effect for as long as the budget will be in effect. And you, you'll have to abide to extent they apply to you, those temporary statutory changes that were passed by, by the state. And there, there, there may also be in the voluminous legislation that Congress has passed, passed recently, provisions that are temporar, temporarily putting requirements on you. For example, many of the federal congressional acts have put requirements on you as employers that will be, that are effective and you have to abide by, but that will, will eventually be temporary and will go away. So that, that's my explanation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't, the, I think earlier in the meeting, there was some discussion of the verified credits. Did you get an opportunity to look at the state's guidance around verified credit and the impact on our local policy?
No, I have not, but I will say this, this is a broad resolution that's meant to deal with everything at once. If there were individual situations where the board determines that notwithstanding the fact that the state and federal governments have said, we're not imposing these requirements on you. If you wanted to choose to accept, you know, those requirements, we could pass a new resolution that would say essentially, notwithstanding this resolution, you are imposing upon yourselves and your administration all the federal requirements related, for example, to special ed that may have been waived by the state of Virginia or by the federal government. But of course, in doing that, I mean, the reason that you're getting these waivers is because the state and federal governments have determined that if they, that possible are very difficult for you to meet these requirements. But if you all were to choose in certain areas that you wanted to, notwithstanding that, impose the requirements on yourselves as they, you know, actually exist in the law, notwithstanding the waivers, I think you could do that.
Okay.
Would need to do a separate resolution for that specific area, such as verified credits. I'm happy to take a look at that and see, you know, to what degree that might be within the board's discretion with the idea, you know, if there's a majority of the board that, that in that area wanted to continue to impose on themselves whatever the statutory requirements that have been waived. You know, that potentially could do so, it'd be subject to a majority vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cloud, for the clarification. Anyone else with further discussion before we move to the vote? Ms. Basine?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the verified credits is, is one example. I just want to be clear that, you know, that this resolution isn't misunderstood to mean that all of our policies and, and future policy work that we have to do currently and going forward the next several months during this pandemic, that this resolution doesn't preclude us from continuing the work on policies that are not reflective of laws and regulations that have been waived. So, or, or law, or policies that we have been, that have been recommended by the state, like the local, locally verified credits, you know, have been recommended by the state to develop a local policy around even in, even in the short term.
No, it, it, it has no such effect. I mean, the, the only, the first question would be with regard to anything, has the state or federal government, the president, the governor, the legislatures, or some regulatory official like the state superintendent of schools with the authority to do so, have they said literally, you do not have to follow this? If they have said that, then this waives whatever that, those requirements are.
Right.
It does not waive any requirements where, you know, such officials have made no statement regarding it one way or the other and have left it entirely to the discretion of local divisions.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I'd like to go ahead and have a motion, actually, there, there's been a second. Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll?
Yes.
Basine?
Aye.
Camson? Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin? Martin? I didn't hear it. I said aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Hi, thank you very much. All right, guys, we have one more item on the agenda tonight and it does not require a vote. Okay. Dr. Birdsong, the next item up for discussion is our budget. And seeing that Mr. Cloud is in the dark right now and it is 9:15, if you could just hit the highlights, that would be greatly appreciated. Unmute.
Absolutely, I can certainly do that. Thank you very much. So what I wanted an opportunity to do is just to provide you with an update because we are going to have to make some critical decisions as I mentioned to you at the very beginning of the meeting. So we would like to, Mrs. Toward and myself, to give you an update of where we are, of where we believe that we are right now because we haven't received anything officially from the city of Norfolk yet. But I have spoken with the city manager, Dr. Filer. He and his team have done a wonderful job with communicating with us and we certainly appreciate that. But we, we need the board to understand where we are financially because we will have to make some very critical decisions moving forward. So as we go through the presentation on the next slide, we're going to provide an update to you about our city revenue as well as the state changes, projected changes for the 2021 funding priorities that I would like to recommend to you. Ms. Toward will provide some information about the stimulus funds that we are slated to receive and then an update of where we are right now with our budget. So Ms. Toward, if you don't mind, just kind of giving them a high-level overview of, you know, the next few slides and certainly will answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, members of the school board, and Dr. Birdsong. On next slide, Karen, thank you. Before I get into the slide that details the area where the state funding baseline has changed, I would like to share the state definitions of unallotment and budget reduction because there is an important distinction between these two terms. Unallotment suspends funding and does not allow it to be spent until a later general fund revenue forecast supporting the spending is adopted by the General Assembly. It is possible that these funds could be allotted and distributed to school divisions pending a revised state revenue forecast supporting the spending. School divisions should not include these funds in their budget planning until further notice. A budget reduction is a permanent removal of state funding from the direct aid to public education budget appropriations. School divisions should no longer expect to receive the state funding. Next slide, please. This slide details how the state funding baseline has changed. The March budget, had it remained intact, would have provided Norfolk Public Schools an $11 million increase, while April's amended state budget provides only a 5.8 million increase. That's a reduction of 5.2 million. Now let me review what has stayed the same and what has changed as a result of the budget amendment. VRS rates, that stayed the same. Compensation supplement, Norfolk Public Schools was scheduled- Compensation supplement, Norfolk Public Schools was scheduled to receive 2.5 million to provide a 2% increase for 2021. However, this funding was unallotted at the reconvened session. School counselors, this is a budget reduction. The General Assembly eliminated the funding to reduce the staffing ratio. ESL, it was recommended to change the staffing ratio from seventeen per thousand to eighteen point five per thousand. That stayed the same. At-risk add-on, the General Assembly unallotted the increase in per people amount. VPI, the governor proposed to increase the per people amount by 10% from $6,329 to $6,959 per student. This increase was unallotted at the reconvened session. The last one, infrastructure and operations per people fund. This was adopted at the reconvened session, but the amendment also permits VDOE to prorate the funding in case of a lottery revenue shortfall. Next slide, please. This slide demonstrates how the reduction was implemented by revenue category in the reconvened session. The third column from the left represents what the General Assembly approved in March. The fourth column is a summary of the budget amendments approved in the April's reconvened session. And the last column shows the net change in our revenue from March to what happened in April. The total state revenue for 2020 is 197.5 million. The new total for 2021 is 203.3 million, a decrease of 5.2 million from what the school division was slated to receive pre-COVID-19. SOQ programs, this is where most of our funding comes from. In this category, the reduction is approximately 550,000 and is due to the budget reduction of school counselors. Incentive programs, the reduction of 4.7 million from 17.9 to 13.2 million came from the unallotment of the following funds. Compensation supplement, two and a half million maximum per people amount for at-risk, 1.5 million. VPI decrease in per people amount, 700,000. There's no change in the categorical programs. The lottery-funded programs, there's no change, but once again, the amendment permits VDOE to prorate the supplemental lottery per people amount in case of a lottery shortfall in FY 2020 and 21. Next slide, please. And now I will speak on the city revenue. Norfolk Public Schools has a revenue sharing agreement with the city of Norfolk. What you see on this slide is based on what the city manager presented to city council two weeks ago and last night and what has been shared with Dr. Birdsong. The city is projecting a 40 million shortfall in all of its revenue streams for FY 2021. Norfolk Public School's share of that shortfall has been projected at eight million based on the fourteen revenue streams that are a part of the revenue sharing formula. The city manager has recommended to city council that the 15 million from the sale of Lambert's Point Golf Course can either be used to offset the school's revenue shortfall in both this fiscal year and next fiscal year or to fund major capital improvement projects. No one really understands the impact of COVID-19 at this time, but once the city has the final number, they will let us know, hopefully next week or so. We will then share that information with you when that becomes available. Next slide, please. This slide provides a snapshot of both city and school funding from two standpoints. One is pre-COVID-19 and the other is our current situation. When the school board approves its FY 2021 budget proposal in March in the amount of 352 million, Norfolk Public Schools was slated to receive an increase of 14 million over FY 2020. That's an 11 million increase from the state and three million increase from the city. Unfortunately, that is no longer the case. Our funding for 2021 will be 5.2 million less than what we were originally expected to receive. When you add that decrease with the eight million projected decrease in city funding, that's 13.2 million less than the originally expected. The bottom line is our revised estimated revenue for 2021 is 337 million, an increase of approximately 856,000 over 2020. Next slide, please. At this time, Dr. Birdsong will speak on her recommended priorities.
Again, and I'm not going to go line by line, but I do want to point out a few things. Again, our continued, my suggestion for, or recommendations for continued funding priorities certainly would include compensation, safety and security, additional resources for schools and building maintenance and building repairs and maintenance. And so if you'll look on the next slide, it speaks to compensation. While we will not be able to increase the, well, at least my recommendation at this time, the starting salaries for teachers, I do strongly recommend that we provide a step increase for all of our teachers. And so to me, that would be certainly one of the top priorities. And so I definitely wanted to point that out. You can go through the next few pages, and again, I know you've had this information for quite some time, to see what my recommendations are as we move forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions about my continued recommendations. And then Ms. Tow, if you would please, starting with the balancing strategies, just inform the board about the balancing strategies as we're looking at shortfalls from the state and the city.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. The following outlines our approach to balancing the budget. We will realign existing positions and only fill the positions of greatest need. And we will implement a hiring freeze for existing non-essential positions. There will be a reduction in central office departmental budgets to 2019 actual spendings or based on needs. Stimulus fundings, which I will address next, will be used for non-recurring costs. We will eliminate positions due to declining enrollment and take into account attrition. So overall, we must maintain a high level of flexibility during these challenging times. Now I'm going to talk about the Stimulus CARES Act. Next slide, please. Okay. Congress has approved the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security, or CARES, Act, part of which was designed to help lessen the negative impact of pandemic on public schools. Norfolk Public Schools CARES Act stimulus funding is 12.7 million and is allocated proportionate to our 2019 Title I funding. The stimulus funding can be used for the following purposes. Activities to address needs of low-income students, children with disabilities, English learners, racial and ethnic minorities, homeless students and foster care youth. Resources for school leaders to address needs of individual schools. Improve preparedness and response efforts. Training and professional development on sanitation and minimizing the spread of infectious diseases. Summer learning and supplemental after-school programs. Technology including hardware, software and connectivity for online learning and mental health services and support. Now, a portion of this funding will be required to provide equitable services to students and teachers in all private schools in Norfolk. The performance period of the stimulus funding is from March 13, 2020 through September 30, 2022. Next slide, please. The last slide is the current budget update. For 2020, the state is expecting a shortfall in sales tax and lottery revenues. Norfolk Public Schools should expect a significant decline in sales tax revenue for May and June. And because sales tax revenues are delayed by a two-month period from the month of sale to the month of payments to school divisions, for example, we will not know the impact of the April sales tax until June. VDOE also has permission to prorate the supplemental lottery per people amount in case of a lottery shortfall. We will share that information with you once it becomes available. The city manager's presentation to city council two weeks ago and last night cautioned us to expect a revenue shortfall for FY 20, $3 million for the fourth quarter. While we don't know the exact dollar figure associated with the state and city revenue shortfall at this time, we know that there will be a negative impact, so Norfolk Public Schools must plan accordingly. Our strategies to address the shortfalls for this fiscal year include capitalizing on salaries and benefit savings that come from unfilled positions, freezing all departmental spending except for school plan services and furlough non-working part-time employees effective May 8, 2020. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
We're happy to address any questions.
Ms. Smith?
So, thank you for the presentation. I have a lot to say. I'm not too sure how we can discuss FY 21 in a lot of detail without discussing FY 20. There's a lot of verbiage here, but this information would be better presented to us to be able to make informed decisions and have intelligent discussions if we could see the money that goes along with it. We understand, or you're saying in here, that there's going to be a shortfall, potentially $3 million in FY this current year?
Yes, for the city. That's correct.
So you mentioned about freezing departmental?
Discretionary spending.
Hold on. Furlough and offsets. What are the dollars that are associated with that? What is the thought process or the metrics that goes into how much we're going to get in savings from this? Because not just that, but it's clear that we should be seeing savings in utility costs anyway, right? Because we're not operating our buildings. We should see savings in not moving buses as often as we do, especially from a fuel perspective. There's so many other areas that we ought to see savings simply because of the nature of how we're operating now. And not to be able to see that quantified in numbers makes it difficult to even hold a discussion with what you're proposing here, not just for 20, but for 21 too. For 21, it'll be great to see what we approve, what we anticipate these changes to be side by side so that we can we can visualize what's taking place and how it's going to impact us. Just saying that we're going to freeze all departmental spending doesn't say much to us. How much do we get from that? How much do we get from the offset in salaries? Have you looked at these other areas that we know? You know, just thinking about school crossing guards. We're not utilizing them right now. So we should see savings in so many different places that aren't even addressed here.
Thank you.
I don't know how it's presented to us. We can't, we can't discuss this. We can't have, we can't have a give and take conversation the way this information is presented.
Ms. Smith, I understand what you're saying and I would just like to remind the board that, you know, this presentation was uploaded on Friday. Dr. Birdsong does make herself available for questions or concerns that you have. And really, this is just an update to us about where they are at this point in time. You know, I truly do believe that Dr. Birdsong and her staff are working to figure out in the moment where funds are going to be spent, how they are providing savings and what they are doing right now in order to continue the services for the students that we have. And so I would just, I would just say that I can understand your need to want to have more information, but just please be mindful that you can always call ahead of time and get some clarity.
Noel, don't keep telling me that. When information gets put out at the last minute and, and let's talk, see, I don't want to talk about that just yet, but I don't need you to tell me that, okay? So we're talking about the budget that came out on Fri, late Friday evening. And we only have a few days to look at this. We haven't even begun to talk about cramming three or four meetings into one meeting that's taken us to 9:30 at night. That's part of the problem too.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay. Who else would like to share a comment about the, Ms. Martin and then Mr. Jordan?
I'm not done.
Ms. Smith, you've had an opportunity to speak and we are all on a time limit right now. So we're going to allow everybody to have an equal share of time. And if we can have the opportunity to come back, I will definitely make sure that we
Come back to me.
Ms. Martin?
I want to say really quickly, you know, this is, you know, as we move forward, we're going to be, have to move, be able to move forward incrementally because there is so much uncertainty. And, you know, the city and the governor, these are just, you know, a lot of this is just the best they can come up with today. But when the governor comes back and has a special session in August, we're, you know, we very likely will have to come back and make some adjustments. And when the city realizes, you know, when they're, they're on better ground to be able to forecast the next three quarters, we'll have to come back and renegotiate that too. So I, you know, I just want to remind everyone, this isn't the end-all.
A budget is a living document.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, Ms. Tanner, can you take down the stopwatch so I can see my colleagues when I'm talking?
Do both. I'm sorry. The timer, the gallery, I'm not able to do both.
Okay. Well, I like to have the gallery because I can't see my colleagues and I like to see them when I'm talking.
Do a split view. Go to view options, Mr. Jordan, because I can see all of y'all in the timer and click.
Number one, I'm not, I appreciate that we have decided to do the one minute now, but I think that this, we should allow for the time for the discussion that we need to have. The, I'd just like to start with just the process and, and the communication. I agree with what Ms. Smith has raised, but let's start with fiscal year 20, the current fiscal year. The board approved the budget. So monthly, we have business meetings. We may look at adjustments, transfers and things of that type. So right now, it's the, it's the school board's responsibility to approve the budget. So I appreciate all the work and the recommendations. But as Ms. Smith said, I think the first thing we need in terms of the current challenges that the city manager has shared that we face based upon the revenue formula is for us to be able to get the information, as Ms. Smith said, first addressing that. We have in here recommendations around furloughs. We got an email about part-time employees paid being stopped. You know, we get that in one day and then two days later, we get this presentation. So I'm, I feel as a member of the school board and the board's responsibility to deal with some of these budget issues, even acknowledging the superintendent's role and responsibility, I think getting a heads up and things being communicated to us with quality information is important. It's hard to ask questions if you don't have the information in order to ask the questions. So I think, I'm sorry, so I think that we, we need to receive the, the quality information that Ms. Smith was talking about for how we're going to address the three million gap and get a sense of all the revenue we currently have, all the expenditures, what's encumbered and so forth. And then as far as the proposed budget, the school board passed a budget and submitted it to city council. The city manager made some recommendations to the council and he's given some information back to the division. But that doesn't mean that now we start chopping things up until we've had an opportunity to come back and have a discussion as a, as a board. We sent a very detailed budget over and I think we need to have the opportunities of board to talk about our priorities as well as the Dr. Birdsong's recommendations and her priorities. But if in trying to close the three million dollar gap, we start talking about attrition and savings and so forth, then we need to know what does that impact have on potential uses and revenue as we then try to make any adjustments that we may or may not need to make based upon the actions that the council takes once they, once they approve the budget. I hear you in terms of we get a document on Friday and we have the opportunity to ask questions. But really, we need to be able to function as a, as a team and have conversations as a team. And if we do ask questions, we then need to get responses to those questions in order to have a valid discussion. So I'll pause. If I get a chance to come back, I'll finish if I get a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Clanton? Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Clayton?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I mean, I'll just reface in this, you know, we all know that we're in this very unique situation right now and even the whole budget process in itself, and if I'm not even mistaken, I do believe that city council had a budget hearing tonight. Um, where traditionally, our superintendent and our board chair are there to uh, to make uh, you know, comments on behalf of, they sent a joint letter. City council hasn't officially finished their budget and, and based on what I heard and watching the presentation of the city manager, he's already talked about losing revenue, which was been presented here in the fourth quarter, which is their biggest time. But then also the potential that we may have to revisit the budget quarterly, even releasing the funds to this district. I just encourage all my colleagues that are sitting here on this call tonight that we have to approach this in a way we have given our um, our superintendent and the staff, the administration to come back and to present ideas. And these are suggestions. These are not final because we haven't voted on them. We're not taking a vote tonight, so this is the time to have conversation, to come back, generate questions, so that when city council gives us what their final numbers are gonna be, then we can come back and make a decision back in June. Um, but I think that we've really gotta take into consideration here that, look, we gotta work together. I understand it's late, yeah, we've been a long call, we're all here. Um, but this is what we signed up for. Um, and most importantly, people are counting on us to make the right decision and make an informed decision. And, and I'm like, yeah, ask the questions, but we can pick up a phone, we can send an email, um, and we can look at the presentation. I mean, it was properly uploaded on Friday. Um, and we can come back. This is not the end all. And I don't think this is gonna be the final on this discussion. We're gonna be coming back and really looking at our budget and really leaning on the administration and our superintendent for this coming year as we're going into some very fiscally unknown things because we don't know. So I just encourage all my colleagues, let's, let's really come together, let's, you know, we got a lot of great skill sets that are there. And I'm a Smith, you know, CPA and, 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 you know, and working with numbers, you know, let's just come together. Let's focus, let's work, you know, with our um, with our administration to make some informed decisions. So that's just my comments on that tonight.
All right. Again, this is, this is, again, just meant to be an update to the board. All right. Okay, Ms. Smith? I'm sorry, Ms. Basin.
All right, I've had my, using the hand raise function too, it seems to not catch attention. Um, I would encourage us tonight, you know, before we leave here, I, I think the long span of time between the last time we met and tonight has, you know, done us a bit of a disservice in terms of being able to do the work of the school board. And as you know, that's something that I've sent a few emails about um, having those meetings. Uh, but what I would encourage us to do, not to belabor the point, I know these are recommendations, but I wholeheartedly agree with uh, Ms. Smith in terms of getting a full accounting of the expenditures and um, uh, revenue and how funds may have been reallocated uh, during this pandemic and to see where we are today and how we can move forward based on any decisions that the city uh, then makes in the coming weeks. But I would hate for us to go another month uh, without having an appropriate work session uh, where we can have a robust discussion, robust discussion um, that is not determined by a timer um, on, on these very important issues uh, that we have. Uh, that is our role and responsibility to uh, uh, to take on. So um, if we can determine a next date, time that is focused on the budget and any other priority item, I would like for us to, to do that. Uh, because this budget discussion is extremely important.
Ms. Camson?
If we have another meeting, can we just limit it to the budget? So we're not doing it for five hours again. Seems to be that we got cut short on the budget because it was at the end and we've had a very, very, very long meeting. But if we decide to, uh, follow Ms. uh, Ms. Basin's suggestion, um, if we could just have a meeting that focuses solely on that. You get it through? That would just be my only request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camson. Okay, Ms. Smith?
Uh, Ms. Camson and Ms. Basin, that's basically what I was gonna say. Where we co- commit to a meeting that allows more than fifteen minutes to discuss this budget because it's basically the foundation of our division. And what we do here dictates how our division is going to operate.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, uh, I just have, uh, first I have a question. Uh, Dr. Bursong, with the um, the, the, the issue with the uh, part-time employees no longer receiving the pay, uh, what was, how much money did you project that we would have in savings with that?
Half a million.
Half a million.
And, and just for clarification, because I, 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 I think um, words are important. And, and so let's be very clear. What we're doing now would be no different than what we are, we would have done pre-this pandemic situation. When part-time employees work, they get paid. If a part-time employee works tomorrow, they get paid. So I don't want there to be, you know, any other perception of what we're doing other than what we're actually doing, which is paying our part-time employees when we work.
So, in the, in your recommendation then, can you explain? There's, there's mention of a furlough and then there's the part-time pay. Can you explain the, the furlough?
Uh, absolutely can. Um, so, again, as I explained earlier today, when we had the initial closure, our part-time workers were paid based on a two-week lookback, meaning that they did not have to submit time sheets, that the payroll department did research and did a two-week lookback and paid our part-time employees in accordance with that. That is, that was a typical practice, practice by many school divisions in our region. Now moving forward, we know we're facing a budget crisis. We're no longer able to do that. So that was one of the budget strategies that I, we discussed with our um, budget director. And so we decided to put it in place and the projection was that we could potentially save a half a million dollars doing so.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna share with you all, I looked at um, a, a presentation that Roanoke City did and one from Richmond. I'd like to share that with you all. I'm still uncomfortable with the uh, furlough action and things being taken without really having an opportunity to discuss it with the board and get a sense.
Nothing is being taken. If our part-time employees work, they will get paid.
What, what I was saying was is I just feel in terms of the board having an understanding of the overall picture and whatever decisions are being made, how it impacts closing those gaps, I like for us to have an opportunity to get an update on that a little earlier prior to them being implemented so that we know what's, what's coming and why it's coming and be able to uh, to explain it.
Understood.
Madam Chair, um, if there's no objection, I'd like to um, to ask that we add to agenda planning um, a meeting specific, because I think based on the conversation I'm hearing here, specific to budget um, in the month of May.
Uh, Mr. Clayton, thank you for um, the comment. Uh, you know, this is an update presentation. And again, this is Dr. Bursong sharing with the board where we are at this moment in time. We still have financials that we're gonna have to approve. Um, they're, all of these documents um, will be brought forth um, to the board. And I certainly don't mind if there is a majority of the board that needs to have further discussion with regard to the budget, then we will certainly do that because we want everyone to feel very comfortable about the decisions being made um, with regards to the funds. However, if there are individual board members that have more detailed questions or uncertainty about items, I would ask for you to reach out to Dr. Bursong and she can assist you in getting the clarification that you need. Because not everybody may need that level of detail. But I respect those who do. Uh, and so I would say that yes, when we do our agenda planning, we can identify a date and a time, um, if that is what the majority of the board would like to do. And certainly, um, we wanna make sure that everybody is very um, comfortable with the information that is being shared. Okay? All right, um, let's go ahead then and um, that being said, Ms. Smith, do I see your hand up? Yes?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment that while we certainly, and we are aware that we can speak one-on-one with the superintendent, it does not provide us the same benefit as holding discussions in front of one another as a group where you have a give and take of information and ideas and we're able to glean from one another and become a little more smarter about certain things or areas that we aren't necessarily smart in or specialized in. So the one-on-one conversations are okay, but the primary place for us to have our discussions are in our meetings so that we can learn from one another and share information and ideas.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Camson, and then we're gonna go ahead and wrap this meeting up.
I'm, I'm perfectly in support of having a meeting that just focuses on the budget. No additions added at the last minute, just the budget. But I would make a request that it not be used by members of the board to make remarks about other members of the board. That if we could just have a, if we could just stay on topic with our little remarks, it would be greatly appreciated. Let's be respectful of everyone. We have our meetings.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay.
I move to adjourn if nothing else.
Second, um, I, do, do we need to vote? I don't, I, maybe I missed that. It's been a long meeting on the special ed plan and all of that.
Dr. Bursong, we have voted on all of the items that we.
Just wanna make sure I don't recall voting.
Worth in place.
Okay.
We had a specific time for German, yes, uh, but we don't have a specific time, so it's up to the chair.
Correct, correct, correct. And, and Dr. Bursong and your staff, thank you so much for staying with us through this meeting. We certainly appreciate it. And um.
We did vote on the special ed plan and the CTE plan because, okay. Okay.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Um, I would just like to just uh, end the meeting by saying for everyone to please stay safe. We do think that some of the uh, orders for staying at home will be relaxed. But again, please continue to be safe and look forward to further discussions. Bye-bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.